Morning, Jerry.
Morning, everyone.
We're live?
Yes.
Okay. So, good morning. It's eight thirty-one, and I am going to call the Committee of the Hole for June seventeenth to order. There is an agenda in front of us. Are there any additions to that agenda? Counselor Christie.
If not, I'll move the agenda as presented.
Thank you for that. So, we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. The minutes of the May twentieth Committee of the Hole meeting were pre-circulated. Are there any errors or things that need to be corrected within those minutes? Counselor Cunningham.
I'll move to approve the minutes of the May twentieth twenty twenty-five Cow meeting.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion to approve the May twentieth twenty twenty-five Cow meeting minutes. Committee of the Hole meeting minutes as presented. All those in favor? And that's also carried unanimously. The first item of business on our agenda is two point one, which is Class Three landfill discussion. And Mr. McKernan, welcome. And anytime you are ready.
All right. Thank you, Chairman, Counsel. So, this morning, I just bring a discussion to the County Committee of the Hole in regards to the Class Three landfill that is currently operating out at our site by the hamlet of Torrington. Back in August of last year, administration presented to Council information on the current solid waste services that we provide to residents. In that discussion, Council directed administration to restrict the usage of the Class Three landfill to the residents of Neill County as of January first of twenty twenty-five, which we have implemented and are continuing to do so. And this was done to look at extending the potential lifespan of our current cell, since it is the last one. So, as well as, I guess, as well as just to point out, as well as, you know, closing that off to non-residents, we also still do diligently sort the loads at the site to ensure that we also continue that lifespan of that cell as well. So, just to kind of point that out. Back in two thousand eighteen, WSP was engaged to complete an evaluation of our existing Class Three landfill. And at that time, they assessed the remaining space of nine and a half, nine point seven years, which brings us to the year of twenty twenty-seven, when it's expected that we run out of airspace at that landfill. And just to, again, just to make sure that you're aware, that is, that is an approximation, because we don't have a scale of site, so we don't know our exact weights that come into that landfill. So, everything is estimated. So, it could be a year later, it could be, you know, six months before. It all depends on what comes into the site. After we had our discussion in August twentieth, we went back and talked with WSP about looking at updating that study. And so, we did do that, and that basically reviewed the regulatory changes, if there were any, updated for construction costs, and just kind of look at that, kind of, you know, those sorts of things to kind of give us a better idea where we're sitting in twenty twenty-five instead of twenty eighteen kind of thing. So, included in the package is the results of the updated version, as well as the original version, or version are both in the, in your package there, so.
Before you go forward, I understand Counsel Phobes has a question?
Yes, it's, the last time I was out there, John, I never realized if there was a sign up that stated, sorry, Mr. McKernan, if there was a sign up there that stated that we weren't taking outside stuff. I know you have a sign out there, so does it state, I can remember when I went out there last, if they, if it said that we're not taking outside of residence.
Yeah, so through the chair, we do have a couple of signs. They're not like the posting ground signs, but they are signs that are basically on the, on the, on the attendant shack as well. Unless the winds took it away, there used to be one actually on the entrance gate. But I'll have to check on that one to make sure it's still around, but.
I'm going there. That's something.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good. So, that's kind of the background of it all. Like I said, it was a discussion prior. We brought back some updated information, and now we just wanted to have a kind of a discussion about our way forward with this landfill cell. So, the proposed location of the new cell, that would be in the same area, since we already have that land owned by Neill County. We have a bit of land there that we can use, and that would still be, again, at the site that we call Torrington Transfer Site. This would negate the use for purchasing any new, new land for it, so that would also cut down the cost, as well as some of the engineering that we'd have to develop, just to kind of make sure the area is good enough to put a landfill in. Yeah, so attached in your drawings, send in the studies, that shows the location of where the new cell would be. And if you're familiar with the site, it would be kind of on the southwest portion of the site, where it's a big green space right now. We couldn't go in any further south, because there is a major gas line that runs through that one quarter, and we can't, and also there's a waterway as well through those trees and stuff like that. So, we're pretty limited to where we can go at the current site, and that one spot is about the only one. In the proposal, in this thing, you would also see that they're either proposing two cells that would be constructed at different times. And if we weren't able, there's a, there is a low-pressure co-op gas line that runs in that area as well. If we weren't able to have that moved, then we would have to probably limit the, or lower the size of the new cells, and maybe make it into just one larger cell and not have the two separate ones. So, if this were to be a way to go forward with constructing a new Class Three landfill cell, the project would commence in twenty twenty-six, and this would basically be the development of the required engineering drawings and the application to the Government of Alberta for approval and registration of the new cells. This process would most likely take about a full year to complete, and then the construction of the new cell could begin in twenty twenty-seven if everything was approved through the authorities. Although there wasn't much change, that changed through the requirements, it should be noted that a stormwater retention pond may be required to be constructed as part of this proposal. Our current ones don't require it, but that is something that we could maybe expect to have to include as well. The new cells would provide approximately additional thirty years of available airspace. This estimate is based on compaction rate of four hundred and fifty kilograms per meter, meters cube, and it would require the continued use of the compaction machine that we currently have at the site. The current machine, though, has surpassed the expected lifespan, and a replacement unit is in the cost of somewhere around the hundred, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to replace it, and would be required in the future if we were to continue on. So, this cost would have to be considered as well. It's not included in the chart that I provided for the construction costs. The new cells would be classified as a Class Three facility still, and the current restrictions as to what materials we can take now would apply for this future cell as well. The provincial approval currently caps the total volume of waste at ten thousand tons per year, which we currently are under, so I don't see that changing. We don't have a scale at the site, and so, we don't, we're just basically estimating it, our volumes, at a weight of three hundred and fifty kilograms per load. As I mentioned before, there is a crossroads gas co-op pipeline that potentially is running within the footprint of one of those proposed cells. And like I said, there is the possibility of having that moved, or just altering the size of those cells. I just wanted to note as well, with every landfill site, you do have a liability with the cells, which continues on past through the closure of those cells. So, once the cell is closed, we still have that liability of that. We still have reclamation costs that we have to consider, and we also have to continue testing the groundwater around those sites for approximately twenty-five years. And depending on what the things are, it could be longer kind of thing. So, just keep in mind, we have that for our current site. If we develop new cells, we'd again have to continue on longer and longer for that, so. In that chart there, I've estimated some costs for development, and these are based out of the new updated report that WSP completed. And like I said, below in that chart, you can see the costs. And it doesn't account for any replacement of machinery or a scale house if we chose to go that way, so we get a better accuracy of what we're bringing into the site and how long, you know, those potential airspace, if we ever looked at it, could be done kind of thing.
John, we have another question.
Okay.
Reeve King.
So the gas line that's shown on the diagrams, that potentially would have to be moved, appears to me that it just goes to our site. Is that correct?
Through the chair, that's correct. It goes to our, our greater shed that we have at the, at the end of that site there.
So the, the potential is we could likely get it moved, so that wouldn't interfere with the development of a second cell?
Right. So through the chair, I have, my original conversations with them a few years back was that, yeah, that probably shouldn't be a problem. I tried getting a contact again to get an updated, maybe cost to move it, or that sort of thing. But I hadn't heard back. So I'd probably say we could move it, but I don't, I'm not 100% sure to give that.
And you said there was another gas line that interfered with expansion to the south?
Right. So through the chair, where we have those gravel stockpiles and stuff like that.
Oh, yes.
That's also Neale County-owned land, but there is a large oil line that runs through the middle of that quarter. So we probably wouldn't meet any setbacks for that. Plus, in those trees in the back there, there is a waterway that would probably also cause some, maybe, could possibly cause some issues when we go through the application process.
Okay. And then the other question is, there's a whole bunch of little sites and numbers that are noted on the diagrams that we have. Is that from cores that they've taken, or what are those delineating?
Through the chair, which, sorry, which one was that one?
So even on the one that's here on the, on the screen, there are a whole bunch of little boxes. What are those?
Oh, those would probably be just the cores, like just for ground, like.
So they're coring sites.
Yeah. They didn't do that in the last one. This was probably from the original build.
Okay. No, that's fine.
It might even be elevations, if I can't see correctly on that one.
Okay. There is a later diagram that looks like it has elevations and topography on it. Those ones, I just was curious as to whether they were just ground cores or not, so. Not a problem. Thank you, John.
Councillor Christie.
Just curious, several landfill sites that I've been by, there, because there's quite an elevation where they're piling garbage and then capping it. So do we have an elevation requirement? And that's why we're closing these cells, or we can't go higher?
There's, through the chair, there's possibility to look at going higher. We're kind of restricted to the machinery that we have out there. We'd then also have to bring in cover. We'd also probably, maybe personnel-wise, we'd have to look at maybe, looking at expanding that, just so, because you can't, like right now with these cells, we can actually not cover it for, you know, I think it's 30 days. If we start piling up, then it'd probably almost be a daily, like, you know, well, not daily, because we're not open every day, but it would have to be an activity that's done continuously. So we'd probably have to look at, you know, what our staffing levels are out there and stuff like that as well to go higher. And I think you need to get approval to go higher as well. And then just everything to berm it up, so we don't have the flying away trash that'd become a lot bigger of a problem than what we have at our current site to be built up.
But to do the elevation part would probably be in the permit when you first started it, too, I would guess. I'm not sure.
Through the chair, I'd have to look into that one. I don't have the answer for that.
Okay, thank you.
I think we're ready for you to continue.
Okay. So that was kind of my little quick spiel on constructing a new cell, cost for it, the requirements. Or, like I said, there isn't much of additional requirements, other than maybe a stormwater pond that we may, or capture system we may have to install. Other than that, it would take probably, like I said, about a year to go through the drawings, construction of those drawings, and then the application process. And then hopefully by 2027, we could start construction. So I'd like to just kind of move on. So the costs are there. You can see those costs. We also looked into a, a program where, instead of constructing a landfill cell, we basically start implementing a roll-off bin program. So this roll-off bin program can be, can be constructed in many different ways. You could have bins at each of our sites, so we have more coverage throughout the county. We can continue it at one site, i.e. the Torrington site, where it's, the cell filled, the cell is there currently. Or we could do something where we bring in bins on certain dates and times, and allow access to that as well. As a member of the Drumheller District Solid Waste Association, those bins that we collect could be taken to their Class II landfill in the Drumheller area. Again, approximate cost of this program, so it is an estimate, because we don't know how busy these bins would be. But I did, I did take these costs off of a neighboring municipality that actually does operate such a service. They have one large site that's a lot busier than ours. And so they also have one that's kind of like a, I guess, a carbon three-hill site. So I kind of went in between that. And that's where I kind of got an approximation costs for this program. And so if bins were to be permanently only at Torrington Transfer Site, so all year round, we're basically looking at about 191,000, just under 192,000, just under that, per year for bin rentals, transportation fees and tipping fees for that program. Estimated cost per bin, so a full bin, transportation, tipping fees, that sort of thing, is estimated around just under $800 per bin. So I estimated that we would have about 20 bins per month that we would have to move from the Torrington site, if we had it year-round. Again, these costs, they would be determined, obviously, we would go through the RFP process. So maybe our bin, per bin cost might be lower, it might be higher. That would be something that would be determined through that RFP process. As mentioned before, roll-off bin could be offered on different, like in a different scenario. So it could be offered on specific dates. So instead of us having that cost, yearly cost, maybe we, you know, have a couple events per year at different areas of the county, where we could place these bins, have them monitored and supervised, and then taken away. The closer we are to the landfill, or to the, you know, to the contractor's area, is the less. Transportation is the biggest cost in this bin program. So, yeah, so there's, like I said, there's, you know, you could have those events, or you could have them permanently set up. At this time, we would only look at, we would look at using a contractor for this roll-off bin. But it would, if it's something that was still of interest after kind of a little test wall, then we could look at maybe, how much does this cost in-house, instead of contracting it out? Maybe having a truck and some bins might be, might turn out to be a little more cost-effective. But that's something we can look at in the future, if this was something we decided to pursue. So other things that may add to this, in cost-wise, is that depending on the locations and the topography, there may be, there may be the need to construct ramps for people to access these bins. I know that at the neighboring municipality, they have a couple sites where they had to construct these ramps, just to make it so that people weren't, you know, throwing their, their waste over a six-foot bin wall, kind of thing. So there would be possibly the need for that, which would also kind of obviously include some budget money to have that done. The use of these roll-off bins, just I guess as a thing, if they're permanently at our sites, it also offers as that immediate backup when our transstore bins are unable to be collected due to inclement weather, or truck maintenance issues. And then we don't have to turn away our residents when they're showing up to get rid of their household roundup, because we have no room. We would have these bins that could act as that immediate backup. Again, these roll-off bins, they would be restricted to the available room at any time. It may result in, you know, residents being denied the ability to offload until those bins were changed out. I guess comparable to the cell, the landfill cell is there, it really doesn't fill up unless it's closed. But these bins, we could run out of room if it's a busy day. So there could be some, some turnaround there, if that's, just to kind of have a con on that program. So some financial and staffing implications for, for these two programs. I should also mention, like, these are two that I'm highlighting, so that we continue on a service of this. There is also the option of closing the landfill, focusing on just recycling, and not having that option. But I didn't include that, because I thought if we wanted to continue that service on, then these are two ways of providing that service. With the construction of new Class III cells, there are some immediate costs and some future costs to consider. The immediate cost would be the regulatory support, so the engineering for those drawings to be completed, the application process. The engineer would lead that, so there would be obviously some engineer project management costs as well. The cell construction costs, and the possible stormwater retention system that may, depending on how the application process goes, may or may not be needed. And again, if there was a desire that we have a more accurate accounting of what waste comes into our site, then the installation and purchase of a scale house would be required as well. And as I mentioned before, that compaction machine is at the end of its life, so there would be the requirement of replacing that at some point here in the future.
I'm going to interrupt you again, Mr. Kieran.
Okay.
Councillor Whitstock has a question for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know what the topography is north of our cells there, but would there be an option to purchase some property there and construct some cells on the north side? I don't know who owns the land. I don't know whether it'd be suitable or not for the, for landfill, but it would probably be, I mean, it, it makes sense not to move it further to the west, but to move it further north. So I don't know, just a question, because that would give us, according to what I see here, possibly 30 years of lifespan. I'm not really fussy about roll-off bins. There's a tendency to, they, they don't get as full as they should be, but I'll leave it at that.
So through the chair, just, I guess, I didn't look into, looking at purchasing properties. I just looked at using our site. So if that's something council wishes, then we can further investigate the different areas to put this in.
Anyone else? No? Okay. Thanks, Mr. Kieran.
Yeah. So just continuing on with the financial and implications. So of the, that was kind of the financial part for the construction of the cells, the financial part for the roll-off bins. It would be greatly determined by the level of service to be provided. So if we were going to do just events or something, that would significantly cut the costs. If we were going to put the bins permanently at each site, that would obviously increase the costs. Like I said, we would also have those bins monitored, because there is the potential for contamination material to be in there. And we don't want that, because that would raise the cost of tipping sites, such as people decided that that was a good place to throw all their oil, or something like that. So we do have to make sure that they are attended, so we can keep that sort of materials, just like we're doing with our cells right now, kind of thing. So some staffing implications. So currently at our site, we have two attendants that operate the Neale County Transfer Station, which is a Torrington site. This doesn't anticipate changing. A requirement of a landfill is there is always a certified operator overseeing the day-to-day operations of the site. We currently have one operator certified. And to maintain this certification, the operator must work a minimum amount of hours at the facility. As well, they have to attain a determined amount of CEUs, Certified Education Units, within a three-year time span. So this requirement is accomplished through the operator budget and funds set aside for this training. So we would, if we had a clean, another cell, we'd have to ensure that we kept a certified operator on staff and trained and certified. So there's also that staffing application that we want, that we'd have to continue. So that's kind of about all of my rambling. Attached, like I said, I put in both of the, both of the evaluations, the old one plus the updated one, and the drawing of the, the co-op gas line is in there as well, just for all your references. As well in the updated evaluation, you'll see kind of the application process and, and that sort of thing for the approvals.
Thank you. Councillor Penner, you have a question?
Sure. Morning, John. Couple of questions. The other municipality that you had mentioned here, are they using their own transportation, or they got a contractor hauling for that 796 bin?
So through the chair, they have a contractor hauling that. They, they are also looking at what the cost would be if they did it on their own as well.
Okay. The other thing, these bins are not going to have households in them, or they'll have some probably. But I mean, it could be contaminated with non-household, you know, so there is tipping fees involved, even though we belong to Drumheller Solid Waste. Maybe most of our ratepayers don't realize this, you belong to Solid Waste. That is household garbage, not construction. That, so the tipping fee would be there for sure with these bins, just to keep that in the back of your mind. And we would continue to have the transstore there, right, for the household, but this would just be for the other. So there would, there would always be a tipping fee, even though we're a membership of Drum Solid Waste.
Good information. Thank you. Reeve King.
So I did a little bit of quick research in response to Councillor Whitstock's question. And the land directly north of our landfill is owned by Her Majesty, or His Majesty, the King. It's Crown Land. And I did a little math on your roll-off bins, at 20 bins a month for 12 months of the year, for 30 years, is approximately about $6 million, if the cost never changed. So if we developed two landfill cells and bought a new compactor based on the numbers you're providing us here today, it'd probably be in the $2 million to $2.5 million to do that. And we have property that we potentially could develop. So from an economic point of view, and maybe a potentially a 30-year window kind of point of view, to me, it seems sensible that we would look pretty hard at developing to the west, and the two cells that are potentially available to us on that site. That's just a couple comments I would throw into the mix here at this.
Councillor Penner.
So just going to, it's, show something else out there. It's very early in the waste-to-energy production stuff like that. And it's a shame that we're not more into that, because roll-offs could make sense. We would not necessarily have to send them to the, where we belong to. We could be sending them somewhere else that requires this material. It's a shame, like I said, that they're not already up and running. I would have a clearer answer. Roll-off bins would be a no-brainer, because we did hear that from our ratepayers, that why are we not looking into this alternative energy stuff? But our doors are not being knocked down with companies or businesses wanting to start these up, so, which is a shame.
And, and I have a little bit of information through CAPE about that as well, that the, the one that's starting up in Edmonton has been much slower at getting to where they want to be. They're very much behind schedule, which then means the one that is proposed for possibly in Anisville is going to be a long time before it's even started. So we are probably looking, probably at 10 years before that would be an option for us. That's just a real general guess that we, as a committee, are guessing. We, we have no actual fact to back that, back that guess up, but it certainly would be a very long time, is what we know as a committee there. So we have to find answers for that in term, for sure. And I think it would take a while to establish how they would like to do business with other municipalities from there as well, so.
Councillor Penner.
Just a question, and maybe it's for Mr. Zier as well as Mr. Kieran. Seawo, we're part of Seawo. Is there anything that you've heard to do with that, a waste-to-energy? I haven't heard anything recently, so just wondering if administration has heard anything. Mr. Hogan?
Go ahead, Mr. Hogan.
Through the chair, no, no recent updates.
Can you remind me again at the location of that? Oh, sorry, Mr. Zier?
Thank you. Just, just to follow up on that as well. And yeah, the last contact I've had with Seawo was over a year ago, so we haven't had any updates on that. Just in the consideration of, of the two options here, just one thing to consider, which is a benefit for the roll-off bins, is the lowered liability, which we're always concerned with going forward, potential for changing regulations in 30 years on the monitoring of these sites, and potential changes to reclamation requirements. So that's part of the consideration why we did include these roll-off bins, taking the, the waste off-site and disposing. waste off-site and disposing it out of county, basically, at this point. So just some things for council to consider in the conversation as well.
Thank you. Counselor Penner.
Thank you for that, and it's something else that we really have to put into reserves if we go ahead with this for the closure and post-closure. It's huge numbers, being, I said on the Drumheller Solid Waste, it's a massive amount of money that they are suggesting we put in reserves, and we have been doing our best for that, so, because it is monitored, like John said, it's to twenty-five, thirty years after it closes, you still have to monitor.
Excellent point. Any other questions or thoughts? Reeve King.
So in the, in the numbers, Mr. McKernan, that you've provided us, there is the closure cost estimates in there as well. It doesn't necessarily tell us what we might end up with having to do if we had to clean up a landfill site. Those costs would be outside of what you've estimated. And if the potential developed for waste from energy going forward into the future, because we're talking two cells for a thirty-year life, if we constructed a single cell at this point in time, we would have fifteen years of potential life and an option to look at alternatives at the end of that time. Am I correct that the thirty years estimate of life was based on the construction of both of those cells?
So through the chair, so yeah, if that thirty years is based off the total area that they proposed, if that was one cell, two cells, like I said, if that pipeline wasn't able to be moved, then we'd obviously have, probably lose a few years off that lifecycle. So yeah, that's correct. Just on the closure cost there, so that, in the regulations, you already have what you have to do. So you have to lay down a clay layer, you have to lay down a topsoil, you have to plant seed. So that's what those closures are. Maybe in twenty years, those requirements change and we have to add something else kind of thing, but that's currently what the regulations are right now. So that's a estimated off materials to do that.
Are we currently aware of conversations to change those regulations right now, or right now they seem to be?
So through the chair.
Stable.
Yeah, when we had this redone, everything was, like I said, all the regulations were the same, nothing had changed. The only thing was maybe that stormwater retention pond. So we're, it's a Class III facility, so we're not dealing with organic waste, we're not dealing with that kind of thing. Everything that goes in this should be inert, so we shouldn't really be getting a lot of decaying matter, that sort of thing. So our regulations are, I think, are probably pretty, pretty straightforward.
Thank you. Counselor Christie.
We have this, the corridor to the east of that corridor that the landfill's on now, or the county does, is there any potential for that corridor or not?
So through the chair, I believe that's getting into the gravel pit that was done, and I think that's where the waterways are all kind of heading into, so we'd be pretty restricted, I think, through the approval process where we can stick those in.
Yeah, the map doesn't show it. It shows the one water course on the northwest, northeast corner, but not the south. But I'm just curious, because we own that next corridor, but I know that that whole area is full of gravel pits and stuff, but gravel's, gravel's worth something too, you know?
Yes. And through the process, I think when we went, they would probably court, and if it was a pretty porous area, then that construction cost may go up, because we may have to line it.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Just another thing for council to remember, too, if we do go ahead with building these cells or whatever, the certification is very important, somebody has to be on staff for certification. This may be, we may, well, we probably should almost have a second person who is certified on staff, so that is extra wages and stuff like that to get this person certified. And maybe there is somebody already in the process, I'm not sure, and I don't need to know that, but it's, in order to run these landfills, you must have that certification.
Good point. Cell council? What do you want to do? Counselor Forbes?
If I'm looking at the two options, I would be more in favor of the cells, because I too also did the math as well while we were sitting here, and mine came out to five point seven million, it was December sixth. So yeah, oh, okay. So I too would look from the long-term aspect of it, and true story, after fifteen years, maybe by then we'll have a different way of looking at how we deal with garbage from a provincial level as well.
Mm-hmm. Buy us some time?
Yeah.
So I guess I'll throw it back to staff. Do you think that machine will last five years, ten years, our packer? Or tomorrow?
Through the chair, I'm sure we've got a few years left. We did just rebuild the transmission in it, but the, there's every little thing, like the cab is pretty shaky, the wheels are going to have to need to be sharpened up, that sort of thing. So there's, there's a lot of issues. Every summer, we need to have the air conditioning redone. It gets pretty hot in there. So just little things like that, it's, like I said, it's past its life, but we're, we've been chugging it along just to, till we get to this point, and then we'll probably more reassess the condition and that stuff for it, so.
So furthermore, are we using that daily, that compactor, or is it just once a week, once a month, like, like, I mean, the days were open, sorry, not?
So through the chair, we, operationally-wise, we, we do it at least weekly. Depends on the volume that comes in. We try not to do it on the days that people are, that were open, just because people in the pit, the machine in the pit, it could cause some issues, so we try not to do it. It does happen sometimes, so it's about weekly that that machine's used.
Thank you. Counselor King, I mean Reeve King, my apologies.
Well, I'm a counselor too. I guess I look at that machine at the landfill and, I mean, it's like any piece of machinery we have, we don't want to keep it till the wheels come off, basically. And so if we're going to have a conversation around landfill and alternatives, if we choose not to go with the bins, in my mind, we're choosing to replace that machine. For some reason, landfills, regardless of the potential future liability, seem to be the most economic way that municipalities have chosen to deal with their garbage. And that's whether that landfill actually exists within the municipality itself, or whether it's going to another landfill. So if we chose the roll-off bin option, we have to recognize that all we've done is moved the liability for our material into somebody else's municipality. So if we chose the roll-off and it goes to Drumheller Solid Waste, if that's potentially, or if it goes to a waste-to-energy site somewhere in the future, which we have no idea when that might be, we are choosing, we have to acknowledge we're choosing a higher-cost option ultimately in the long run, to the best of our ability to see into the future, because we don't know if sometime in the future they change the regulation and what we have already buried has to be dealt with in some way, shape, or form, so. I know, it's, it's, it's a difficult decision to make. I tend to agree with Counselor Whitstock, roll-off bins are very inefficient in terms of the space usage within them. And so I've watched at some of the transstore sites, when the towns or the villages bring the bins in for whatever, and it's chaos and confusion, so. I think we would have, if we chose that option, we would have to have someone standing, almost standing there to supervise what's happening with those roll-off bins. I don't know, I'm...
Thanks for your thoughts.
I'm leaning strongly toward a cell.
Counselor Christie.
I'm leaning towards a cell, and there's nothing saying that if we use roll-off bins and send garbage somewhere else, that we don't still hold the liability for that garbage down the road. I know I have a nephew that cleaned out an attic, the zoning was bagged, tagged, and if it ever has to be moved from the land site that it's in, he gets a bill.
Any other thoughts? Where we're headed, but we want to suggest? Counselor Cunningham, do you have anything to add? No? And do you have a preference of which way to go?
I'm in agreement with what everybody said, yeah. And I think, as Counselor Penner mentioned, I think the importance of planning with our reserves, right, for the future is something we definitely need to take into account, for sure.
Thanks for sharing that.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
So I see in, in the discussion that administration is recommending or would like to see us move in the direction of the roll-off bin. And so I need to be convinced of why we might want to go that route as compared to a landfill cell. And so I'd be very interested in hearing from administration the rationale and the reasoning other than the future liability. I, I'm assuming that might be the only potential reason why we'd look at roll-off bins and why we would choose, deliberately choose a higher-cost alternative. So I, I'd be interested in hearing that.
Who would like to take that?
Well, I can start off through the chair. So obviously, the liability costs are a big part of it. Another part of it is just the day-to-day operation of it. We have a certified operator that's, that's needed. I can't be certified, I've tried, I'm not there enough, it's based off hours. We basically barely get it, and the reason we barely get it is because we added a, made the one operator full-time, and so we got the hours that way. So we're not open enough to get that certification if they were just at that site, but on Fridays, he's there pushing the pit, things like that, so that's considered hours. So we got lucky there. That operator is at the stage in his life where he's probably looking at retirement, so we're going to have to look at replacing that. I can, you know, it is a struggle to find operators that would be certified or willing to be certified, so that's another one. Again, operationally, daily, there's struggles every day out there, just with what people want to put in there, thinking that they can, it's a hole in the ground, they can throw what they want, so it is a struggle with the attendants to enforce that sorted load thing, having to refuse people. So there is those things that come with it, not just the cost, but also the operations of it day-to-day. There is issues, whereas these bins, you know, it's a little more lenient, we're taking it to a place that can accept a little more items than what we can at our Class III facility. In these costs for this, it also doesn't include the costs in those, that chart that I gave, it doesn't include the employment cost. It's probably not huge, wouldn't make a big dent in it, or, you know, with a million dollars, probably wouldn't show up too much, but like I said, there's, there's more than just the liability to it, it's the, the ease of the day-to-day operations, the ease of providing the service, not only in the northwest section of the county, but also maybe bringing it to people down in the south part of the county, maybe at our other transfer sites or, or at a hamlet or, or something along those lines. It just gives us more flexibility. I know that probably the majority of the people that use the Torrington site are from that area. You don't, you do get people from the Acme area, you do get people from that, but I don't think we get many people at all in the southeast corner coming up. We may get a couple, but it's, like I said, it's, it's servicing that specific area mainly, mostly. So like I said, I understand the costs, but I just think operationally-wise, service-level-wise, you could probably do a little bit more with the roll-off bins, even though it does cost you more. Those are, those are my kind of thoughts, maybe Mr. Zier or Mr. Hogan have other things to mention?
Mr. Zier?
I, I think Mr. McKernan really hit the, the key points on that, looking at the liability and looking at the unknowns in the future. Yes, it's Class III, yes, it's inert waste, hopefully, but it does open us to that risk. Looking at the, the cost analysis, and actually, truthfully, we look at even that compactors, that's been a discussion topic today, knowing that we will probably have to replace that in thirty years multiple times, because they are not a thirty-year machine with the impact on that. So depending on how much time we can get out of that as well, the cost increase. We just looked at the, the two options, we looked at a system that does work well in other communities, and then depending on the expandability of, of looking at our other sites, which we can still do regardless of the decision made at Torrington here, we can bring in roll-off bins if council sees fit for some of the other communities, kind of see the flavor on there, how they use that, maybe brought into that. But going back to Reeve's original question here, it was understood that it's a higher-cost option, but more secure as far as we know what the, what the end result will be on this, and, and not hoping that the legislation doesn't change in the next thirty years, as we know with a lot of environmental regulations, we see a huge, in the last thirty years, and to look at what thirty years from now, those may be, we're kind of future-casting that into this decision.
Thank you. Anything to add, Mr. Hogan?
Through the chair, no, I think those points have been summed up nicely.
Great. So what I hear is increased service would be an op, would be an opportunity for increased service, should we go with the bins, as well you feel as though the managing of the risk is better in this option? Is that, in a nutshell, what, what you were saying? Perfect. Reeve King.
So as a follow-up question that I'm going to ask, if we went to roll-off bins and we went to multiple locations, I'm going to assume that those locations would be strictly within our own transstore sites, and that they would be supervised and monitored as to what's going into those bins as well? Because there is liability on our end if the wrong material gets into those and it shows up at a landfill and they're not acceptable. So to me, we're still going to have the enforcement of material that's going into those bins, and the turn-away problem that we have, we're just going to increase the number of locations, potentially at which we have that. Now, I know we have one landfill and one operator who's totally unafraid to turn people away, and has quite a reputation for that, but that's good, because that says to people that we expect that you bring material to us that we are allowed to either accept or transfer somewhere else. So I, I guess we'll lose the requirement for the certified operator, but we will have to increase the ability of our existing site supervisors in their ability to sort and figure out what's going in where. So to me, we're going to have to upgrade some of the training on some of our site managers currently, and really up their game, I think, if we're going to go with roll-off bins in multiple locations.
Mr. Zier?
Yeah, just to add a little bit to that, and, and I guess looking at, at overall, the training over our site attendants is to regulate what waste is coming in there, to make sure that proper waste is being brought in here. Our stance is that if, if there is a ratepayer that is being abrasive, that is demanding that they, they able to drop it in there, that we do allow them to drop. We do not want to have our, our attendants entering conflict with any of the outside. What we do, we, we note the, the attendant, or we note the, the customer description vehicle, that sort of thing, and do pass that information on. But we are on the stand, so we are not looking for, we want strong regulations out there, but we're not looking for conflict. So the training already exists in our operators right now at that point, and I think if, if there's further enhanced that we can do, we look at that. But a lot of our operators do have those confrontations across the, the board, not just that one attendant at, at Torrington, so.
So when you were proposing transfer bins, were you proposing them to be staffed? That part I'm not clear on. Yeah?
So through the chair, they would be, depending on the program you chose, I mean, either way, if we brought them into hamlets, then we'd probably have like a, I don't know, like an event from nine till five or something, but they would be staffed up kind of thing as well. If they're in our transfer sites, our transfer sites are always staffed, they're, like I, like Mr. Zier mentioned. They're, like Mr. Zier mentioned, they're already screening loads, so they're already screening what can go in those transfer bins, because we're restricted in that as well. So they already have that kind of training to screen those loads. So, yeah. I know there's issues if they're unstaffed, what can be put in those, so we'd definitely be looking at having those staffed as well, so.
Thank you. My other question is, lost.
Like, I heard from the residents of Swalwell that they would love to have a roll-off, not necessarily there permanently, but just once a year, spring cleanup, fall cleanup, whatever, you know what I mean? That's what they're asking for. So I don't think we'd need them in sites other than where our transfer stores are right now. That's just my feeling, but that's just hearing from the residents of Swalwell. They would love to have, you know, which would have to be manned, of course. It would be a two-day blitz or something, they could bring whatever to these bins. But we haven't been able to offer that in the past, but maybe it's something, even if whichever way we go here, maybe we can still offer that going forward.
Through the chair, I just wanted to clarify, even though we recommended the roll-off bins, that doesn't mean we're opposed to constructing a new cell, that's what council so chooses. We can definitely do that. It's just our recommendation, but like I said, we're not opposed to it. Like, we can definitely do it. And then if we did construct the cells, then maybe there was the service where we went to Swalwell with a couple bins, an event kind of thing, like a spring cleanup or a fall cleanup. So there is that option. So I didn't want you to think that we're pushing roll-off bins at you. We're definitely, if council so chooses, we would definitely go with the cells as well, right? It's not like it's a, you know, I just wanted to make sure that you're clear that we weren't pushing roll-off bins, it's just a recommendation, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Counselor Whitstock?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'm not opposed to roll-off bins, but I would much rather have a cell. But that being said, we still have the opportunity to provide that roll-off service to some of the hamlets, and I'm not saying specifically just to hamlets. We have transfer sites around different parts of the county, and we could do a trial for, I don't know, you know, give it a go and see how it works out. That would limit, I don't know if it would limit the amount of material coming to the landfill in Torrington. It would probably, what it'll probably do is increase the amount of material that's going to a different landfill if we use those roll-off bins, because it's more convenient and people will use it if it's, you know, not 30 miles away. So I'm not, I would look forward to giving roll-off bins a bit of a trial and see how that works out, and see if it does stop the amount of material coming to the landfill site. But that's just my thoughts.
Counselor Whitstock, when you say a trial, do you mean before we make a final decision about whether or not to have them as a regular thing, or just as a trial in addition to having a landfill?
I think, I think what I would look at is give it a go, see how it's going to work, and then we'll have a better idea on how you're going to staff it, how you're going to limit what comes in, because, yeah, I just, I'm thinking, like, give it a go here, say, in the fall, and say we're going to do a cleanup in the fall, and see how that works out, and go, I guess ultimately, to see if it's going to work with the roll-off bins. See if there's going to be issues with people coming in with stuff that's not acceptable, and what they do with it after they're told they can't put it in the roll-off bin.
Thank you. Counselor Phobes?
So we did a pilot project for some bins, I believe, out at the Three Hills. Where are we at with that? Because that should be able to tell us how we did out there, would it not? Or is that completely a different bin?
Through the chair, that's a different bin. That's just a recycling bin only, so it doesn't accept any kind of debris material like that.
I'm Reeve King.
So having listened to Counselor Whitstock, and I'm absolutely opposed to dropping bins in any hamlet. I would certainly support a trial of bins in a supervised transfer site, like our own transfer sites, to see how well that works for us and how much difficulty that provides, and whether or not it takes any pressure off the Torrington site. Any trial that we do is going to increase our costs for waste disposal, but I guess we need to look at two things. One is what that increased cost might be and the potential increase in supervision. And the second one is the level of convenience that's experienced by our ratepayers by having access to disposal in more sites than just Torrington. So I guess I would support some form of a trial to see how well that might or might not work for us, but only within our own transfer sites, and only under strong supervision. A bin dropped in a hamlet supervised during the day will get all sorts of unsupervised material during the evening, so unless it disappears.
Ms. Phobes?
I will agree with you on that, because of putting a bin at my uncle's place, things got put in there that we did not put in there. So if it's not supervised and there isn't gates around it, which becomes a whole different thing, you're going to have people putting things in that are not supposed to be going in there. So then who's going through it the next day to pull out that stuff, and who's taking it to where it needs to actually go?
So through the chair, we'd be very cognizant of that. So if we did drop them in the hamlets, then they would be there only during the supervised times, and then obviously with the contractor, we have them, remove them, kind of thing, right? And then the next day, if we had a two-day event, bring them back for the next day, kind of thing. So there would obviously be those controls in place to limit that. There's many stories of the contamination, I guess, that goes in those bins, so. So we'd be definitely cognizant of that. If we were to do something like that, then we would set it up program-wise to hopefully try to eliminate it, for sure. But like I said, our sites are manned, so that would be the perfect place to start, for sure. Totally agreeable.
Go ahead, Counselor Phobes.
I guess I would like to hear the positive aspects to doing a cell itself as well. Reeve King has pointed out what it would be if we did a bin. Now, could you give me the why would I choose to do a cell as opposed to the bins?
Sure. Through the chair, I guess I'll start off. Everyone has, obviously, the first one is the cost. You can see the difference of it. There's been mention of the difference of the cost. The pros would also be that it's there. You've got 20-some years of your investment that you've put into it, 20 to 30 years of available space for the future. You have the material, you know, you have a set place. People know the hours, people know the place, people know, hopefully, they don't, but, you know, we have the set, what we're allowed to take, what we're not allowed to take. So there's, like I said, the biggest thing is that it's there. We have the land that we could possibly use to do that. So, and like I said, it's open to the whole county. If you continue to go forth, it's a residence, so there's that, so there's, like I said, there's positives to it. Like I said, we weren't, through the recommendation, I wasn't trying to persuade you away from it, I was just...
Go ahead.
I guess I have a follow-up question around, do we have to insure the transfer site? Like, what does the county pay for insurance per year-ish guessing? I mean, you don't have to give me the exact number, by the way, just ballpark it.
Through the chair, we do, and I think, I don't have, I don't, I'm going to ballpark a couple thousand dollars a year. For, that's for the site, that's for like the building, the shack and stuff, for the pit itself. I think it's more of a, you put money aside every year for that liability. It's in the budget, and I don't know, it's thousands, I can't remember it off the top of my head, though, but.
Counselor Penner?
Sorry, Mr. Hogan?
Oh, Mr. Hogan?
To build on that, through the chair, the county's liability, there, we don't have that answer off the tip of our hands. It's not always just that you have this little speck and there's this much of insurance on there. It doesn't quite work the same way it does for, you know, for us, right, as individuals? I mean, in large parts, it does, but there's, so when we look at like liability as an example, the county has an entire liability policy that covers the county, all our facilities and stuff like that. So I don't know if we have it readily accessible to break that down, if we had one less transfer station, if that would make a difference, that type of granular detail, pardon me, granular detail. Obviously, at some level, it would. But there is, as Mr. McKinnon has said, there is, there'd be property insurance on the actual physical buildings. We have a general liability that covers the county's operations, our sites, that sort of thing. And I believe what Mr. McKinnon was referring to is a post-closure liability, which is not necessarily insurance, per se, but it is something we have to recognize that as we develop those sites, then there is a, at some point, we're going to have to close that site. And so there's that liability we're incurring along the way to, you know, that bill comes due 20, 30 years down the road.
I'll just, go ahead, Counselor Phobes, that's fine.
It's all good, never mind.
Okay. Counselor Penner?
So we have three things here. We have a cell, we have our transfer stores sites right now, and then we have our hamlets. To me, they're three different things. If we were to put them in the hamlets, it's just a one-of, once a year. If we're going to have roll-offs, they have to be at the transfer store sites where there are the people, the attendants are already there to supervise it. That would be the only spot I would be putting them full-time, would be at our transfer store. But then you have to remember that some of our transfer stores are shared with our municipalities within the county. So then they've got to be able to say, sorry, this is just for Neheal County, because they have their spring cleanups and whatnot else in their communities. So it is a little bit more work on the attendants to make sure they know that it's only Neheal County ratepayers putting in non-household garbage into these other bins. So just, it might be a little bit more work for the attendants. I just thought I'd throw that out there.
So we basically have morphed this into three different questions, is like what you said, and...
Well, to me, it's down, it's two options. A hamlet one is just a one-off spring thing that we offer to our residents to keep our hamlets clean and tidy. So to me, that it's still, you know, it's just either a cell or the roll-offs, the at transfer sites.
So are you suggesting, Counselor Penner, that that would be something you'd like to do regardless of what we decide with the other two questions?
Yes, and I've brought that up over the last number of years, if ever we can implement it into part of the budget.
Very good. Reeve King?
So one of the things you said in the presentation today is that it's difficult to maintain the certification for our employee at Torrington because of the amount of hours. And then you told me that we have a full-time employee at the Torrington site. Is that employee there every day of the week?
So through the chair, no, he's not full-time at Torrington. He's full-time, he spends some time at other, other transfer sites, working, so he's at the Three Hills site for half the week, then he's at Torrington the other half. So he's there Wednesday, Friday, Saturday at Torrington.
So are the hours that he accumulates required to be at the landfill at Torrington, or are they, okay, so if he's a full-time employee, is there an opportunity for us to have more hours or more opportunity at our landfill site in Torrington if we developed a new cell, and that would help us on the certification side with the employee? I guess there's a whole whack of questions here that are unanswered for me. One or twice a year roll-off in hamlets, supervised day or two days, and how we might manage that, and what the cost of that might be, how that might affect the amount of garbage that's appearing at unauthorized sites in the county, one of which is, I'm not going to mention, but's getting frequent use right now. The second question for me is if we go to strictly bins and closed our landfill, what might those costs ultimately be? And, I mean, we've got some suggestion of what that might be, approximately $200,000 a year, or whatever the number was. And then lastly, just sort of the whole idea of, do we have to necessarily offer landfill services for free? And the whole question about scale and load size, and what's actually going into our landfill. And so right now, I'm sitting with probably, thanks for the information, John, I really appreciate that, Mr. McKinnon, but there's a whole bunch more questions, I think, that I need answered before I can really give direction. And so to investigate roll-off, yeah, I would agree with that. To investigate potential roll-off service for spring and fall cleanup in hamlets, I think we need to look at that. And then just how we manage long-term. So do we want to do a trial in our transfer sites and see how that works out? I know a bunch of questions that we haven't answered for you, but they're all sitting there, so.
Isn't that fun? You give us two questions, and we come back with half a dozen. Counselor Phobes?
I guess I don't know, I'm not sure who's going to answer this, but what are we currently budgeting to put away for when that cell does come to an end, like the Torrington site? What are we putting away for future costs?
Sure. I, okay, so...
I guess through the chair, would that be something we'd have to look into? It is a budget item.
Yeah.
So it is in the budget there, I just don't know that figure.
Right. It's gone into reserves. So I've had a request for a break, so we're going to take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and hopefully wrap this up. And we'll come back and hopefully wrap this up. And we'll come back and hopefully wrap this up. And we'll come back and hopefully wrap this up. Perfect. Do we have Jerry back, or is he?
He'll be back.
Okay, very good. So we left a lot of thoughts and ideas here, and I'm going to have our CEO, Mr. Hogan, kind of wrap up what he's heard for us, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, if I can summarize this, this is, I think, what administration has heard from Committee of the Whole. And if we're, if we're incorrect on this, then obviously please correct us. I believe in the discussion, we've heard that there's broad support for the development of cells at the Torrington site. If that's the case, then what council would see coming out of today? You wouldn't see anything for a bit, but when we brought the 2026 budget back, you would see a project in there for the design, for the regulatory framework, for all of those backend things that you do prior to construction. And you would see that in the budget as a 2026 project for your consideration. After that, assuming that that was approved, you'd see an actually, you'd see another project in the 2027 budget that would be the actual construction of the cell, or cells. And so that's, that's how you would see that process roll out from, from here. I think we're, what I believe that we're hearing is that there's a desire on behalf of the group to explore some sort of, let's call it a cleanup program. That would be whether that's summer and fall, or one or the other, whether that's in hamlets or at transfer stations. There's some desire for a program of, of some sort to facilitate, whether it's hamlet cleanup or even acreage farm cleanup, those sorts of programs, right? And to facilitate those in, in a way. I think if the, if it's confirmed to us that the council has a desire to, to explore a program like that, for today, that's about all the direction that we would need. And then we would, we would take that away, and we would go and develop that program, what it might look like, what it might cost, and we can bring that back to you for consideration. As well as with the recommendation of whether there exists budget room to maybe try that this fall? Or if that's a project that we would put in budget to, to try next year, right? One, one of the others. So knowing that that, I think we've heard, I feel administratively, we've heard clearly, there's a desire for us to explore that. So we can do that. The other ins and outs or nuances around the, the discussion, so there was, there has been a lot of discussion on it, but it did come out the idea of charging for, for use of the landfill. That again, isn't something that we would need to decide today, but it is something that if there was a desire for council to look at that, we could bring that discussion back. We could bring that back with some additional detail around what do we do, or what, sorry, not what do we do? What's normal for, what's normal, right? What's, what's out there? So like as an example, I can share with you, as a resident of Three Hills, when I take loads out to the landfill here, it costs me $15 minimum every time my truck goes through there. There's other fees, whether it's, I recycled a mattress the other day, that was a $25 fee, right? So that's one landfill. We could do some of that research around other landfills in the area to see what, what that was. And council could have that, that discussion. Obviously, the numbers that we've presented are independent of, of adding any sort of fee for, for that. If you did add a fee, then you would, obviously, there, there would be that bit of revenue associated with going that direction, right? At the same time, you could also have that discussion whether you are going to continue, even with new cells, are you going to continue with residents only, or is it going to be open to residents and non-residents, right? So those are, those are things that you could decide in the future, should you, one direction or the other, depending on the will of council.
Okay, so you don't, you're saying if that's, if you've said it correctly, you won't need a motion out of this, then?
Yeah, I think, I think in this, this is one of the, the items that we're looking at for Committee of the Whole, is a large one. But I think that, I think as we came out of here, that Committee of the Whole would recommend that council explore the development of cells at the Torrington landfill.
Okay, so does, does anyone have anything to add or suggest? Reeve King?
So thank you, Mr. Hogan, for kind of summarizing. The question I would have around if we develop this cell and in terms of determining whether it's open to just Neheal County residents or outside of Neheal, I would be interested in knowing if there's a structured fee system for resident, non-resident in other landfills. So if our residents are paying for the development and the construction of a landfill site, and they're paying a fee to access that, is there an increased fee for non-resident use? And what might that be? And some of that's probably going to affect whether or not we put a scale at the landfill site. And I think that's something we probably should consider regardless. If we decide that we're going to develop a cell, maybe one of the things we need to really think hard about is having a scale on site. Anyway, just a little bit of additional, if we're going to think about a fee schedule, is there a fee that, like you said, if I, if as a resident of Three Hills, I went to the landfill, I pay a fee to get access? If I'm a non-resident, although I know they've closed their landfill to non-residents currently, but I know that previously as a non-resident, I could go there and I paid a fee, so is there a difference in that?
Any other questions you want to be sure?
Through the chair, just on that, we used to have that fees in place, although we didn't have a scale. So if you weren't a resident, you did pay that tipping fee of $20 for a pickup truck or $50 for a 20-foot trailer kind of thing. So we did have non-resident fees in place at one point. So we would definitely look at that option again if that's the way to go.
Thank you. Councilor Penner?
Just for your knowledge, Drum has a regional and a non-regional, and the non, we're regional if you have membership of it. And the non-regional pays $10 on average more than regional.
Interesting. Thank you. Councilor Cunningham?
So just a lot of really excellent information today. I've just kind of sat here and let it all soak in because I do really appreciate Councilor Penner's work with Drum Solid Waste. There's just information that she has that is amazing for us to be able to have to make our decisions, so thanks for that. I, I really like the idea of the hamlet one-day cleanup program and maybe to have that at the transfer sites as well. I think that would be great, and like I said, it may reduce some landfill usage. It'd be nice to know what the future holds with the waste of energy. I mean, I think, you know, that, that would answer a lot of questions, but unfortunately, we're not there yet. Or the provinces, the country's not yet there, there yet. I think we've talked in the past about service levels, and I think it comes back to that a little bit for me. I know one question I would get if we started charging was, well, what am I paying my taxes for? So I think it does always go back to what can the ratepayers expect for the taxes that they are paying. And, and so I don't know if that would have been a good question to ask at a ratepayer meetings is how do you, you know, how do you feel about paying, paying extra fees to use the landfill? We talked about that when the proposed landfill south came in. You know, we asked a lot of ratepayers, I know at the meetings that I had too, is what, how do we pay for this? How do we, how do we plan for that? So I think sometimes we have to put that back in the ratepayer's hands too. But yeah, I know for myself, as a commercial user of the landfill at Three Hills, the fees there went up 1,500 percent. So that is the way of the world now. We're all trying to figure out how to pay for increased costs of our infrastructure, so.
Councilor Christie?
Curious, I just tweaked my mind. In my division, I have several contractors that are putting dumpsters in farmyards for a fee. Where do they go? Are they going back to our landfill or out of the county? I don't know. I just know there's dumpsters there.
Through the chair, that would, they'd probably have an arrangement with the out of, out of county landfill. We don't take that thing because we can't guarantee what's inside those bins for our landfill.
I know the further west you go, the more there is, and more options there are for different companies to come pick up those dumpsters.
And they may utilize the Calgary landfills, I'm not 100% sure.
Yeah, depends, I think that's a commercial agreement they have with whichever place they bring. I know the one that's on my farm goes to Drumheller, but...
Well, and obviously, people will pay if it's convenient, that's the part.
They sure do. Reeve King?
I think in the conversation around pay or not pay for landfill access is, the reality is, is for many of our residents who live in Neale County, who are going to the Drumheller landfill, they are paying a fee to access that landfill, and they are our taxpayers, and so I think it's a fair conversation to have regarding our own landfill, if we want to call it that, there is costs associated with operating it. So, I'm interested in having that conversation around what that might look like for our own ratepayers to access what we consider to be our landfill, because I know that we have ratepayers who are accessing a landfill that we pay to be a member of to get into that on their own as well. So, I think it's a fair conversation for us to have, and I'm definitely interested in having it, so.
Absolutely. And Counselor Penner?
So, I'm going to throw this out there. Drumheller has, depending on what year they do the review on airspace and that, right now, around the 40, plus 40-plus years available, and we're looking for income to the landfill.
Yeah.
I left this to the end, just so that you can all think about this. They want our garbage, we want, Drumheller Solid Waste wants our garbage. You know, we take our household, this is not household, please, everybody remember, this is not household garbage, this is the other. So, by taking in more garbage, our requisites are much lower that we have to collect from the municipalities. So, just throwing it out there, when you talk about these big numbers of having our own sites, the liability is huge, it's a class two, but, and the regulations and reporting is changing all the time, it's massive amounts of money we spend on reporting. So, just putting it out there, we're looking for garbage at the Drumheller Solid Waste.
So, my question?
You got to pay somewhere, you got to pay somewhere, so I'm sorry.
So, are you saying that then the drop bins would be a benefit for that type of idea?
Absolutely, it would, but it would be up to administration to bring back to us on how they would monitor them and whatnot else, and how they would set them up at the different sites.
Thank you for that. So, what I hear is that we're not simply wanting information on the cells, we also want more information on the drop bins.
Which they have provided quite a bit here today, and thank you for that, at the different sites. Just a little more detail when it does come back to the, to a 2026 budget for consideration, the both sites, because, I'm sorry, I didn't want to throw it out too soon, but maybe I should have, but just for you to think about, because of the more garbage we can take in. We're not opening up to, that's non-regional, like really opening it up wide, you know, to the cities or whatever, because we need 40 years. It was the locals that built this site, so we want to make sure that we are guaranteed, the membership is guaranteed, to be able to put their household garbage, or just garbage in general, somewhere.
Right.
And until this new technology comes into tuition, and, you know, it's being utilized, so, but we're constantly looking for more garbage.
It just, that's very good information, because it didn't dawn on me to think that you'd be looking for garbage, so.
I should say that, we are looking for paying garbage, we're looking for paying garbage.
There we go.
Yes. That's excellent.
But, I mean, it goes back to, you know, not in my backyard. And, and, sorry, we all have garbage, we have to deal with it, and it is reality in life. There we have garbage, so we have to deal with it, and those that say, not in my backyard, well, sorry, we still have to deal with your garbage, and it's going to be in somebody's backyard.
Yeah, and this is a philosophy for me, that, yes, we never used to want to charge for garbage, but in my opinion, I think there's a lot of people who still are not utilizing recycling and reuse, and all the other things that we can do to help our communities and our environment, and when there's a fee, you'll be more condescending of whether or not you actually want to make that garbage, whether you can do something more resourceful with whatever waste you have. So, I think it's the way of moving forward, of being a more conscious user of our waste.
I'm just going to throw it in there, because it drives me crazy, this whole EPR thing, we are not set up right now, so our ratepayers and that, they're just as confused as we are, until this program is up and running, give us 15 months, 12 months, 15 months, until we can really see what recycling is going to happen on that side. So, sorry, it's nothing to do with this, but it's...
Well, it does affect it, but thank you. Yes, that's another discussion that would be very interesting. Okay, so, we added a little bit there for you, does that work for you, Mr. Hogan?
Through you, Madam Chair, I'm just looking to clarify exactly what, you know, we know that there'll be a discussion coming back around service levels, usage fees, things like that. We administratively can go out and canvas surrounding areas and landfills to see what is standard out there, so that's work we can do in advance of that. In light of the discussion that Counselor Penner brought up, I guess what we're looking for is, is a little bit more definitively, are we bringing back the idea of the cells? Are we bringing back both? What are we, that's really the direction administration needs, so that we can put the information in front of council, so that council can give us a definitive decision.
Thank you. So, what I'll do is go around the table and ask each of you what you would like to see have happen, I'm going to start with Reeve King.
All of the above?
Yeah.
No. I think my first choice at this point in time would be to have information come back in terms of development of our own landfill cell at Torrington. I'm also quite interested in knowing what the cost would be to do hamlet cleanups and drop bins for that. So, if you ask me for my first choice, I'm certainly, at this point, I'm looking towards probably a landfill cell development at Torrington.
Counselor Forbes? Okay. Counselor Christie?
I'm definitely in favor of looking into the landfill cells for the dumpsters for seasonal, I think there should be maybe a charge for that, because it's an extra service, and we don't know where it's going to go. When I'm thinking about the dumpsters that I have in my division, that they're paying a monthly fee to have them. So, if we do another service in the hamlets, there should be maybe a charge for that.
Good point. Counselor Whitstock?
Move the gas line and let's build some cells. Service, whatever the cost will be, because you don't have to drive, whatever the distance is to the landfill sites, and you just drive 10 miles to dump in a dumpster, there should be a charge for that. I'm not looking to turn all of our garbage into dumpsters hauling to Drumheller, but on the other hand, it is a nice service to have, and we'll see how that works.
Counselor Penner? Sorry, messing around.
I sit on the Drumheller Solid Waste, I would have liked to have seen both, but I fully understand what you're saying here, because we're, like I said, we're constantly looking for garbage, but I do understand what you're all saying, so.
Counselor Cunningham?
Yeah, in agreement with what everybody said, I do, would like to explore the option that Counselor Penner gave us there in the last moment there. It would be interesting, I mean, the numbers would be interesting. Yeah, the one-day seasonal thing, again, I'm 100% behind that, and, yeah. I think, if I'm not mistaken, did Counselor Whitstock earlier mention about a pilot project? I know Counselor Forbes clarified the Three Hills with the recycling, but, I mean, I'm always into giving things a shot and seeing how they work before we go full throttle with something, but lots to think about.
Yeah, and I'm standing in the same position as Counselor Penner, in that if we have, we're already part of Solid Waste, and they have some concepts, it would be nice to at least give the courtesy of exploring those concepts to see how we can be part of that. I do see the financial advantage to a cell, but I do want to be condescending of looking at all our choices a little bit better. Maybe that's because I don't feel confident in my understanding of both the programs well enough to make it, so I would like to see still a bit, bit more information coming forward on both options. But the opportunity to move forward at that point. Mr. Whitstock, Counselor Whitstock, sorry.
Oh, no, no problem. I mean, I don't have an issue with hauling garbage to Drumheller and paying. Possibly the requisition might go down, but the Drumheller waste area is huge, and, yeah, maybe our requisition will go down, but other people will benefit from us hauling the garbage there also. I'm not booing the idea by any means, but if there was a way that, yeah, I'm not going there, regardless of... If it works out, if it works out for Drumheller Waste, everyone that's a part of the association will benefit, not just us.
That's right. Good point.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I have a question for the counselors who are considering the bin potential, and whether we should explore that further. Mr. McKernan, you said earlier today that if we placed the bins at Torrington, and that was our storage site, you would anticipate about 20 bins a month over the course of a year, cost would be $191,000 and change. And again, that's estimated, because we're not sure. If we did more than just place bins at Torrington, so if we had multiple locations, our transfer sites where we had those bins as well, would your anticipation be that that cost would potentially be higher, or would you see that potentially we would have less bins at Torrington, and then they just would be scattered into our transfer sites? That would help clarify whether a bin pickup program would be more than what we're presented here with this morning, or whether it would be the same.
Go ahead.
Through the chair, that's a really good question. That'd have to be kind of a guess, I'd probably say that maybe you'd probably have a fewer less at Torrington, but I don't think you'd have a whole lot less, so it'd be probably a little bit more in the dollars-wise to have bins at every site permanently, you know, but that's why, you know, it was suggested not having them permanently, but to keep those costs down, but I would probably say you're more bins a month if you have them at different sites, for sure.
Thank you. Okay, so, I think we're ready to make a motion of what we'd like to see happen from here. Well, I think it's more than one motion. And we could start with the easy one, the hamlet program. Or whichever one someone would like to make a motion on.
So, I would have a question for you, Mr. Hogan. You were suggesting earlier that we potentially would direct administration to come back with a cell development program? Is that what you were thinking? Just for clarity, for my sake. In your summary, I think you suggested that's probably where we were headed.
Through the chair, I believe that's what we heard, and even in the roundtable that council just did, is I think there was a majority there for cell development. I know that wasn't an official vote, but there is, again, reaffirming what we were hearing. So, if that was the case, then we're just putting a recommended motion together for your consideration, and what you would see is us come back as part of the budget 2026 deliberations with a program, or with a proposed program for council's consideration.
Then I would be prepared to make that motion.
So, you see it there on the screen, does that work for you? Okay, very good. So, do we have some discussion on the motion, that the Committee of the Whole recommend to council to consider the development of new cells at the Torrington landfill as part of the 2026 budget deliberations? Any further discussion or comments? No? Okay, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Carried? Oh, I've opposed, my apologies. That makes it carried, no? Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Penner.
Next motion, that the Committee of the Whole recommend to council to consider the development of a special summer and/or fall waste cleanup program?
Great. Any discussion? Comments? Okay, I do see why we have a real thorough discussion. Oh, go ahead, Counselor Whitstock?
The only thing I was going to mention on that is that maybe it should be a charge for the service. I don't know what we charge for the service, but just thought I'd throw that out there while we're in the discussion mode.
Mr. Hogan, do you see that as a good addition to the motion, then?
Through the chair, I think that's something, as we develop that program, we'd bring back those options, as to what that would...
So, it's understood.
...look like with a charge, without a charge.
Very good.
The pros and cons of, the pros and cons of both.
Thank you. Reeve King, you had a question?
No, I don't any longer, I was going to suggest that that would be part of the response from administration to our motion, is whether it's cost or not.
Very good. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, then I will call the question, that the Committee of the Whole recommend to council to consider the development of special summer and/or fall waste cleanup program? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so that wraps this section up, right? Very good. Okay, good. Sorry, I just had to run through this to be sure I was clear, but yes, we are ready to move on, so, Mr. McKernan, thank you for all your time and energy getting through this longer discussion than you probably originally planned. Thank you. Okay, we're moving along to 2.2. We're going to have a presentation from Protective Services. So, we'll just give them a minute to set up.
Good morning and welcome, Ms. Hay and Ms. Hung, Mrs. Hung. I had a question given to me over the weekend. When we introduce you to one of our residents, particularly if they're under 18, how are we to address you?
To the chair, I know for myself personally, it usually depends, kind of like the age, but usually, under 18, I'm just Officer Amber, for myself personally. But, yeah, most officers just kind of do their own thing.
To the chair, personally for me, I don't like being super formal, I'm very informal, so just being, especially when I introduce myself through the phone to any complainants... any complainants or rate payers, I just go, Ming, the peace officer. So super informal.
Okay, good information. Thank you. So, uh, thank you for, um, coming forward with all the information I see that you're going to be giving us. And I'll let you go ahead whenever you're ready.
Cool. Well, thank you for having us. Um, so for the background, I guess we'll start there. Um, and I know I'm not Deb, so if I, if you guys need any clarification, just let me know. Um, but as part of our protective services report, we're including statistics from RCMP, um, our own stats, as well as EM and fire services. Um, as we all know, Neale County has five RCMP detachments, uh, Three Hills, Innisville, Drumheller, Biscuit and Olds. Uh, four of those detachments provide quarterly reports. Uh, Innisville is the only one that doesn't just because they have such a small little area. There's not a lot that they can really give us. Um, but, uh, yeah, so community priorities for the RCMP were set, and they included rural crime prevention, community safety focus, presence in rural communities, road safety, partnering with us in enforcement, education and engagement, and then youth engagement as well. And then, um, we're gonna let, or do you want to just do section two? I think he's just doing section two. Um, so RCMP reports from January to March, um, as part of their accountability, they provide you guys as council with reports on their stats, community engagement, community priorities. Um, and they are attached to this report from each of those departments that I had mentioned.
Morning, council. Uh, just want to start off by saying, uh, this is my first time presenting to council, so I'm a little nervous, but I appreciate the opportunity. Um, so I'm gonna be talking about the stats for from January to May 30, uh, 30th. Um, so traffic citations. So you can see it's actually a pretty fine balance between warnings and violations. Uh, the, we're obviously more on the education side and more public safety minded as opposed to just being enforcement heavy. Hence why we try to be a little bit more with warnings. Um, I can speak from experience for myself. I predominantly do a lot of stops when it comes to stop signs, just because again, in the communities, when there's a lot of playground zones, school zones, or even the four-way intersections around where the, um, triple-digit highways are, they can be a sore spot for a lot of people. So usually with stop sign violations, they're about a $405 ticket and three demerits. Hence why we're trying to be a little bit more liberal with warnings, just because again, it has to be pretty severe for a citation to be warranted in my mind. Uh, but violation tickets, when it comes to that, obviously, the majority of those violation tickets are for speeding. Uh, but we've had quite a bit of expired registrations, no registrations, or failure to produce valid insurance. Those are a lot of the big ones. Um, I believe that's it. I don't think I have anything else. But anyways, uh, so when it comes to animal control files, again, just because again, we're we were coming into the springtime, we've only had two calls for animal control. Uh, we have currently an ongoing unsightly file in the county and then three bylaws files within the county. We've done three suspicious vehicle files. So suspicious vehicles are just being vehicles just left on the side of the road or just unknown reasons. Uh, we've definitely followed up on them. And most of those times, actually, all of those times, there were just vehicles that were, uh, involved in a collision with wildlife or broken down. Uh, we've done 100, 187 hours of rural patrols. So that's within the hamlets and the towns. Uh, 100.
Just hamlets.
Hamlets. Thank you. Sorry. My apologies. Uh, 18 hours of targeted patrols. Uh, so again, target patrols are being those patrols that are requested specifically with high traffic areas or complained areas. 11 school events, uh, with being like the Remembrance Day ceremonies, the Halloween safeties, or even, uh, up to recently the sports day events. And we've done five other systems departments, so planning and a fire print inspection. And then within the contracted municipalities, uh, we've done 18 contracted bylaw files and then a total of 72 hours for those bylaw files.
Cool. So then we also had road ban season, um, where we did over 65 hours of targeted road ban patrols, um, including on the evenings and weekends. Uh, and you can see from that, it was mostly just patrols. Um, we did have some unloaded trucks we pulled over. We had a couple legally loaded trucks. Um, there was no actual tickets for anything. Um, I know personally, I like gave one warning to a farmer and like helped him sign up for the exemption. And that was about our road ban activity for the year. Um, everyone was actually pretty good about it, which was awesome. And then.
And just to add on top of that as well, um, I was able to speak with the Hutterick community out by Huxley, uh, just because I've had a couple traffic stops during those road bans because they're on a 75% road allowance. Um, they weren't aware of actually how the process worked with road bans on the road. So a little bit of education with them. They applied for the permit and they were able to actually, uh, have a lot more, their vehicles be a little more of their higher road allowance. So that was a great little kind of rapport building with the Hutterick community out in Huxley.
We're gonna just interrupt for a question if that's okay. Councilor Cunningham.
Sorry, I just, and thank you for presenting. You're doing a great job. Don't, don't be nervous. We're, we're pretty, pretty good here. Yeah. I'm nervous. I get nervous sometimes too, so it's all good. So, but I just want to clarify. So the enforcement services, January 30th to, uh, May 30th, 2025. So on the school events, just because I noticed Halloween and Remembrance don't fall into that, those months. So, um, I'm just curious, I'm guessing probably there was maybe some bike rodeos or maybe.
It was bike rodeos and, uh, sports days and.
That's what I was thinking.
That kind of stuff. We were still involved in the schools. Um, that probably honestly just slipped someone's mind.
No, it's all good. I'd just like to hear about the spring. I'm, I was sure you were at the bike rodeos and stuff, so that's good to hear. Yeah, awesome. Thank you.
Absolutely were.
Very good. We're ready for you to continue.
Good morning, council. Uh, I'll present here on the emergency management fire services. So emergency management from January to May of 2025, we've completed the business continuity plan and critical services plans for each department to ensure stability of services we provide during the following or during and following an impact event. Uh, summary was presented to committee of the whole meeting by Deb. Forms and P, uh, planning P process. Uh, we've run a regional workshop, uh, in April and two workshops with, uh, Neale County employees at the beginning of June as we get ready for our exercise tomorrow. Uh, both Deb and myself attended block two central regional hazard incident management, uh, training, uh, in Penhold. Uh, we both acted as mentors for both days of the event. Uh, we were unable to attend block three as it is here. We had to take care of some stuff in house. We just opted to stay here instead of go, uh, participate in that. Uh, Neale hosted the all hazard safety officer training in April with 12 attendees from across the province, including four from our region. So we had really good attendance and really good, uh, officers that came out of that. Neale and our staff are part of the Stettler Regional Functional Exercise with partners from Red Deer County, City of Red Deer, County of Stettler. That's taking place tomorrow, and I'll be going to meet with our, uh, um, exercise coordinator, Michael Curtis, right after I'm done with you guys here. We're gonna go meet with him and get our package for tomorrow. So we're, we're all set for the event. For fire services, we had one fire ban in place during season seizing with the dry conditions. Uh, we were able to follow, uh, able to take it off following reevaluation of risks. However, we continue to monitor and we are currently under a fire advisory. Um, what we noticed, uh, with greenup happening, we didn't have a fire ban on. I did have a question why we weren't in a fire ban with the province being so high, but we had significant greenup in area that the fire risk for us was mitigatable. So that's why we didn't have the second fire ban. Uh, two fire, uh, occupancy inspections have been done, five fire investigations under the fire safety codes accreditation. We donated two trucks. Thank you to you guys for your support of doing that, to the Society for Firefighters Abroad, to Paraguay, completed, and the news release was done. Acme Tender is coming next Monday. So the new truck is is ready. Uh, the Carbon and Three Hills Busch trucks, we're expecting probably mid-July for those two to come in service. We've got most of our equipment we've got for them ready to go. Um, we're just waiting on final, um, construction and little program issues they're having right now with the trucks. So not big ones, but, uh, we want to make sure the product's 100% before we give them to the municipalities. Linden Engine, we are still researching options for the new engine for Linden. Uh, some options we're looking at include refitting new and other things that we can do. So we will have a few options when that comes forward. Uh, I deployed as a member of Cramit Central Regional Hazard Incident Management Team to Yellowhead, uh, for their, uh, Yellowhead Complex Fire. Um, we had two fires, the Merkle as well as Pierce Fire, and we went up there to give their team relief. They were very exhausted and they were very happy with what happened when we got there. I went up in the role of safety officer and we had a total of six members from three different regional teams, South Zone, North Central and Central Region. Uh, the last point, 10 Neale Area firefighters and myself, so a total of 11 of us, uh, we raised $6,054 for cancer, uh, doing the Wellspring stair climb, which was 1,370 steps and 57 floors. I'll be doing it again next year, just as one floor for every year I am old. So that's, uh, that's a goal for me. But, uh, it was a great event while attended by a lot of the, uh, members. And the only fire department that didn't have a member that signed up was Carbon. So it was really good to see at least one member from all of our, uh, partners in fire service.
And Dan crushed it.
I did. Hour and 28 minutes, but I made it to the top. I was carrying full BA. I was in my bunker, my bunker boots, my helmet and coveralls. Uh, didn't need supplemental BA, but I did listen closely to my body when it said, you need to slow down.
Very smart.
Absolutely. So then if we just continue on with the report here, we have the financial staffing implications. Um, we included the provincial policing requisition in the operating budget. Uh, contracts with urbans have been extended to September 2025, as is as part of the intermunicipal collaboration framework agreement groupings. Uh, Neale County has enforcement service contracts with urbans that are on on-call basis only for bylaw enforcement or target patrol areas within their jurisdiction as a per-call basis. Um, and then we've attached the Drum, Olds, Three Hills and Biscuit Provincial Policing Report, quarterly statistic reports, and then community letter. Um, only one of those, they're all the same.
Very good. Excellent. So council, do we have questions or comments? Reeve King?
So the only comment I I have, and this is not a complaint, so please don't take it as a complaint, but I would have loved to participate in the exercise. But in order for me to participate, I need like a month or more advanced notice. My calendar is jammed and so I appreciated the invitation, but I would request in the future that it be more timely, I guess. And so don't take that as a complaint, just as a observation that it'd be much easier to participate otherwise. Thank you.
Through the chair on that. Thank you, Reeve. Uh, we did look at it a month in advance, but we didn't realize one of the injects we were gonna do was a state of local emergency update. And that's one thing that popped up last minute. So I do accept your criticism justly.
Please don't take it as a criticism. It's just an observation that, um, uh, and I recognize everybody in this room, including you folks, are very, very busy. And so, uh, that's very true of us on council as well. And so I'd have loved to have been there, but just, um, unfortunately I can't be. So, uh, my regrets, so.
Councilor Penner? Oh, sorry. It's okay. Councilor Cunningham?
Um, could you just remind me which urbans we do have, um, the contracts with? And then within those contracts, not that I want to know what's in them, but I'm assuming that they are individual to each community. Like they wouldn't just be blanket for each one. They would have services which are specific to each urban.
So the urbans that we deal with, um, are Acme, Linden, Troschu, Three Hills, and Carbon. Yeah, those are the five that we have the actual contracts with. Um, and then, uh, as for like calls for service, I guess, uh, we'll do like their bylaw files as they get them. Um, but it is generally an per-call basis.
Mr. Gannon?
Uh, thank, thank you through the chair. I just want to add that, um, uh, clarity to that question is that, uh, each of those agreements are agreed to with those communities, with those communities in mind. So they do vary, uh, in aspects on, uh, how much time is spent and and, uh, what that expectation with that community is.
Thank you. Councilor Penner?
Um, I just, I think it's so important to have these emergency management workshops and that kind of stuff that you do. And to me, last minute is awesome because not every, you're not given the opportunity to prepare. So I just took it when it was last minute. Sorry that it was necessary. The majority of the staff didn't know what was gonna happen. And you know what I mean? Because in emergencies, you don't know what's gonna happen. So some of these last minute ones, uh, I think it's great. It really gets the adrenaline going and they fully understand you got to get that under control, um, to manage this situation. So, um, yes, it's unfortunate that some of us aren't able to make it, but, um, I'm all for last minute just so that it just shows, it gives everybody the opportunity to what that feeling is like when there is an emergency.
Good point. Thank you. I have a, a question that came to me. Um, when you'd give relief, like you did for Yellowhead County, for example, is there a good justification to consider that being a trigger to cause for a fire ban in our area so that that we're, um, I guess allowing for more availability to where the need is?
Through the chair, uh, with that one, uh, councillor McGee, or sorry, Deputy Reeve McGee, I apologize. Um, we look at all our, our resource or mitigation of it here first. We'll look at the Alberta Fire Danger Map. What do we have for current dangers? We'll talk to our fire guardians and we'll say, what do we need? Having a ban in place means we really want to restrict our resources here so that we make sure that we have coverage for what we need. Um, if we can spare some resources, we, we will have discussions about that at, at the administration level here. Um, when we go to help, uh, we were very cognizant of where it was and we knew how high the danger was, but we also stayed a lot of greenup. So the, the advantage of having that greenup is even if the field does start fire, that green grass slows it down to a point where you can get a couple vehicles in there and knock it down quickly. Whereas if we had it, the, our concerns were the river valleys and some of the areas that we have some of that tall, tall grass. If it gets in there, then it's running and it's also firefighter danger. When that fire comes uphill, it's, uh, there's been a lot of rural firefighters that have had some very poor outcomes because of how the fire pattern works and fire behavior works. But with that, we can look at that, but we do mitigate it by having a, a discussion on that before we go up to other municipalities to help them out.
Great. Um, Mr. Hogan?
Through, Madam Chair, just to, to build on that, is when we, when we get these requests, uh, we really do, as Mr. Marcellus has said, we assess them on what, essentially the basis, what can we spare? And so if we have events going on here, we have coverage that we need to provide here, which for whatever reason may be strained or not, we'll take that into consideration before we release, whether it's staff or even firefighters that we have go to other, other events. Uh, we'll look at that, making sure that we can provide that service to our own, our own residents, our, our communities, uh, before we release those resources to go to, to assist other municipalities. So one of the things that we haven't done is looked at imposing restrictions on our own residents so that we could go help others, which if we were to put the fire ban in place so that we could, um, if we were to put a fire ban in place so that we could release additional resources to go help another municipality, we're, we're sort of imposing an artificial constraint on our own residents when that ban may not be warranted based on conditions we're seeing, like a greenup or anything like that. So we generally don't take that approach to, to those events. As we really look at, can, can our communities afford, um, through capacity wise to spare resources to go help others? And if the answer is yes, then our philosophy is let's go and help. Um, one, two, to, you know, we feel, um, in the industry, it's good practice. It gives our staff practice. And in the future, we never know when we're gonna be the ones on the other end of the line asking for people to come here.
Yep. Very good. Mr. Gannon, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Uh, through the chair, uh, Mr. Hogan summed that up perfectly. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Appreciate the clarity. Councilor Penner?
I would just like to say thank you to our peace officers for taking the time of being available for our sports days. Um, it's nice to be visible and, you know, I think it, the community accepts the authority as to say, you know, when you're out and about with, especially. to say, you know, when you're out and about with, especially the kids, the kids really enjoy it and just seeing it. So thank you, or maybe the fire side was there too, like I know the fire, the local fire trucks are there too, so maybe you were too part of it there, I'm not sure, but yeah, thank you for being available. And also, I want to say thank you for putting this together, the little fire safety quick reference guide for those watching. You can pick them up at our rate fair evenings. This is awesome. Just a little reminder of things that you can do, just a, yeah, just in case, you never know. So thank you for putting this resource together.
Very well done. I agree.
Through the chair, thank you, Counsel Penner. That one there was courtesy of our neighbors next door in special areas. We did add the twist to our own specific area, but that's how we build upon ideas of our neighbors, so thank you.
Regional collaboration goes a long ways, for sure. I also wanted to parrot the thank you for the sports day. It was fun to watch the, our officer in Carbon take some time with some of the youth there. I just, the impression of them seeing you in such a positive relationship, I know, has lifelong consequences that make our jobs easier in the long run, and we can't collect data on that, but we can't minimize just how important that is, and so thank you so very much for doing that.
Through the chair, just thank you for that recognition, and if you all watched the newsletter, I'm pretty sure Christine is working on trying to get a video of Ming running one of the obstacle courses with all the kids.
Oh, fun.
We're just trying to like figure out how to do it with like the liability of like the underage kids and just making sure that it's all good to be media-wise, but.
That would be fun.
We enjoy it too, so thank you for giving us the opportunity.
There's huge value to that, and I think we can't say that often enough. I think some taxpayers don't realize why, but that is an investment in making your job easier for when that person's an adult, and so I think it's very well-spent time.
Counsel Christie?
I just want to reiterate that. Thank you very much for all that you do. I'm unable to attend tomorrow. I would have liked to have been there, but unable to attend, but thanks for what you guys are doing, so thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or conversation? So we need to have a motion to accept the report. Go ahead, Reeve King.
So I'll just add my thanks, and you recognize that I appreciate very much what it is you're doing out there, and I love seeing you on some of those not well-traveled but gravelled roads, and it's always a delight to know that you're out there, and what can we say about our fire services other than thank you? So it's my pleasure to make the motion that we accept the Protective Services Report June 2025 as presented, with our thanks.
Thank you for that. Counsel Penningham?
Sorry, I was late to the draw to get my hand up. If I can just, yeah, one quick comment. So in terms of the RCMP reports, I know that it's different at different detachments, but I just want to point out, Council will hear from me every time we go to RMA that I'm going to bang the drum to meet with K Division. I noticed, I think it was the Drumhiller Detachment spoke of some of the work that they were doing, crime prevention, but they couldn't do it all because of some vacancies that they had within their detachment, so, and of course, if you look to Olds, you'll see that the Olds' current acting sergeant is Sergeant Date, which people would understand that that would leave an opening here in Three Hills at our detachment here. So I will continue to advocate with K Division and with all levels of our government to ask them to please do more work in recruitment and retention and see what we can do to try to keep all our detachments as fully staffed as they could be and continue the amazing work that they're all doing with what they have currently. So, yeah, just thanks to them as well, as always.
Important comments. Thank you. Any other discussion before I call the question? Okay, so we have that the Committee of the Whole recommend to Council to accept the Protection Services Report, June 2025 as presented. All those in favor? Opposed? Cared unanimous? Thank you so much. That was excellent. Have a great rest of your day. Enjoy the sunshine while you patrol. Does anyone need a break, or should we move on? Yeah, okay, we're going to take a 10-minute break this time. 10:56, is that all right? Well, 10:57, we'll say 10:57.
Okay, hurry up. Very good, so we're online and we're ready to call the meeting back to order. And we're going to just take a view right through our new business down to 2.4. Council pointies, uh, excuse me, 2.3.
Oh, okay.
I am rushing a little bit, wasn't I? Oh, sorry. I just like to, I just like to mess with her. Come back and sit down five times. Sorry, budget guidelines, which I really appreciate because I think many of us forget how extensive this job is, and it's a great review for getting us ready, whenever you're ready.
Good morning, council. Today, I'm bringing forward to you the 2026 budget guidelines. These are very consistent with prior years, which is typical when we have a standing strategic plan in place. It really doesn't change a whole lot of where we're going with the budget unless council's given us alternative direction in that way. So through the operating and capital budgets, council sets the council, county's priorities for the upcoming year. These guidelines represent the, will direct the way we do the 2026 operating budget, the 2026 capital budget, and then also the 2027 to 2029 cap, operating forecast, and the 2027 to 2031 capital forecast. Just a reminder, both the operating and capital budgets are an annual process that council goes through, and these guidelines direct how administration develops those. And then the forecasts are also something that goes through the budget process every year, but they're forecasts and they don't actually provide any allocation of funds for administration to incur or revenues to levy on people. It's just the forward-looking view of what's coming up for council as they're making decisions for the next year for the budget. So every year, we go through a fairly similar preparation, review, approval, and communication process. We have some guiding principles that kind of lead us in how we develop the budget and how we align the budget with what council expects to see when it comes to that. We, so we will prepare the 2026 budgets and forecasts following the guiding principles that I'm about to speak to, unless they've, are amended by council, in which case we will go back and adjust and look at what we need to do. So the first guiding principle is alignment with council's strategic plan. This is really the core of everything that the county does in the background, is all that alignment with the plan that council has put forward when they've developed that strategic plan, typically at the beginning of a council term. So we look at making sure that projects are in alignment with service levels are in alignment with that strategic plan, as well as any other direction that council's given us within that timeframe. We also look at sustaining existing service levels. Council sets service levels for administration to implement and maintain, and so when we're developing budgets and forecasts, we plan to maintain existing service levels within operating expenses and capital expenditures. If adjustments are to be made in service levels, they're presented to council for discussion and direction. We also look at maintaining competitive tax rates. During the budget process and when making recommendations to council, administration is acutely aware of the fact that property tax revenues are our primary source of revenue. As such, it's critical to ensure that service levels and future plans are in alignment with maintaining competitive tax rates. This represents a balancing act between desired services and infrastructure requirements, and the potential to generate required revenues to achieve those goals. We also review and recommend adjustments to service fees and rates as necessary. So those are a second, those rates and fees are a secondary revenue source for the county, and during the budget process, we review existing rates and fees and determine if there's potent, potential adjustments that might be required. This includes reviewing rates for comparable municipalities, looking at cost recovery rates, and also looking at council-directed changes to service levels. We also are continuing to implement and monitor proactive infrastructure renewal strategy. This means we're looking at asset management, and we continue to build on asset management to facilitate strong decision-making to ensure the longevity of the county. Asset management is a dynamic perspective of long-term planning and something that we're moving towards, whereas historically, a lot of it was a little less data-driven because we just didn't have that capacity, and really, that methodology hadn't been developed in the way it has today. We also look to enhance the stakeholder experience, and what this means is realizing that the expectations and needs of ratepayers and stakeholders are constantly evolving. So we strive to ensure that our planned operations continue to grow with the stakeholder environment, and that services are provided in a meaningful way to stakeholders. A good example of this is Nihil Connect that was implemented last year, and that ability to give better service levels and more broad service levels to stakeholders within the So those are our guiding principles. Again, they have not changed from last year, they're the same as we've been operating on in the past few years. So administration in the background is well adept at knowing kind of what our direction is and how we develop those budgets. There are a couple other items that are kind of other considerations that I've included in this report, just to give council some perspective on what the 2026 budget process will look like. The impact of inflation continues to be present. It's been significant in the past few years, and it's been somewhat lessened, but that doesn't mean there aren't continued cost pressures. For example, sometimes there's something that we might have been able to mitigate in the first few years of those inflationary periods, and now we're at a point where we need to adjust budgets to align with that compounding inflation that's happened over the last few years. We continue to strive to mitigate that impact, but we acknowledge that there are areas within the budget where inflation impacts can't be mitigated. We also look at the uncertainty of assessments shifts. So this is a slight planned process change, kind of at the end part of the budget process, but we wanted to include this in this report so that council's aware that we're going to change a little bit of what we're doing when we look to balance the budget during the process. Council will remember the last two years after we've adopted the budget, we've come back when we've had to do the tax rate bylaw, and we've had to tweak a few things in order to align with the five-to-one ratio, and in order to align with the way assessment has actually shifted. Before the last few years, assessment was fairly predictable, we kind of had a good handle on how it would shift, and so we could put those ratepayer impacts into the budget process when we were closing, trying to look at closing the budget shortfall, and be fairly confident in what those would look like. The last two years has proven us wrong, mostly because residential, residential assessment has grown to so much that it's impacted where we've thought our five-to-one ratio would lie when we looked at closing the budget shortfall. So this year, council will still see that impact on ratepayers number, but we won't actually pull that piece of the dashboard into place until March, when we actually have final assessment numbers. So the dashboard will look a little bit different this year, we'll look at the total taxation revenue that will be required to close the budget, and what that would be across all tax classes if it was just evenly distributed. And the reason for this is that the last two years, we've actually had one set of numbers that's come out in December for ratepayer impacts, and then one set of numbers that's actually come out when the tax rate bylaw has been adopted by council. And so the justification for this is just ensuring that if assessment shifts in a way we're not expecting, council really has that ability to like, determine exactly how that amount is levied when we look at the tax rate bylaw, rather than us having to go back from what we originally expected. Again, this doesn't hold council in too much of a binding, like, if council determines that there's a certain percentage of revenue increase related to taxes, and perhaps a percent, an amount that we're going to pull from reserves, council could still change those amounts when we come to doing the tax rate bylaw, if the total amount we wanted to levy extra doesn't align with what council wants to see the impact on ratepayers. This is really just in order to make sure that there aren't two sets of data out there on what we project that impact to ratepayers is going to be. And then the third other consideration is the fact that it's an election year. So the last two years, we've passed the budget in December, and ensured that we've had a budget come January 1st. However, we acknowledge that there's potential for new counselors come October, and we want to ensure that there's enough adequate time for them to get their feet wet and understand how the budget process works, and give adequate time to really do the budget deliberation process. And so that will look like an adopt, an interim budget in December, and some, and potential preapproval of the 2026 capital equipment plan. Again, we've done that the last few years, where we've kind of done that in September to ensure that we can secure pricing on capital equipment that's planned to be purchased in 2026. And we also are looking at the potential preapproval of time-sensitive projects, specifically related to projects with the potential for grant funding opportunities which have application deadlines. So council might see a few things that will come forward outside of the budget, but those are typically the more standard things, or the things where we're really hoping we might be able to get some external funding for, and if we wait until the actual budget gets adopted, we might have missed that window. Those are kind of all the extra other considerations that administration is looking at when we're developing the budget this year. In terms of the process, it will be very similar to the last few years, it's just going to be a little bit stretched later in the year because we've got that election in October, when we've typically already presented a good chunk of the budget to council. So we will, in, over the summer, there's inputting budget information for operating project and capital budget requests by management. We look at initial review of forecasting operating project and capital budget requests by the directors. All the budget information then gets compiled and reviewed by finance, and then once finance has kind of looked at that, and the directors have all looked at their individual areas, all of that is then presented to senior leadership, and looked at as a whole before it even looks at coming to council. After that, then we actually come forward to council with the proposed budgets for 2026. And that again includes, the first one will be, actually, prior to all of this, we're going to have a meeting date where it will orient any new counselors, or even existing counselors, to the budget process itself. That meeting won't include any details of the actual 2026 budget, it'll just really focus on how we do things, how we get to where we get to, so that anyone, everyone on council really has that understanding of what they're about to go through for the 2026 budget process. And then once we get to that, we'll have setting the stage for the 2026 budget, presentation of all proposed projects, this includes capital and operating-type projects, as well as any new initiatives that might impact the core operating budget on an ongoing basis. Then there's presentation of the core operating budget, responses to questions from council, and deliberations by council, and then presentation of the final proposed budget for council adoption. Where, again, we're anticipating that be sometime in the new year, and it'll just depend on exactly how the council that is in front of us works through that budget process on what those dates will exactly look like. This report has no direct financial implications or any additional staffing implications. Future reports, though, may impact the county's long-term expenditure and funding plans. Administration continues to prepare annual budgets, detailed program and service estimates, or refine as information becomes available and assumptions are developed or refined.
Thank you. I must say that the last couple of years, the, the budget books and the information you gave us has been very helpful and well-done, and I look forward to seeing how we do the slight little tweaks you have to do, but I think we have a good grasp, and I really appreciate the work you put into that so that we do.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments from council? Wow, see? You do such a great job, we're very content. Counselor Cunningham.
Come on. No, actually, it was just kind of interesting, I just pulled something up. I don't know if our MA's been floating it out, but I've seen a lot of other municipalities share this, so I thought it's some interesting information that Alberta Meany shared. 68% of your taxes go to local government, 31% go to the government of Alberta, and 1% goes to other, whatever other means. So I just thought that was kind of an interesting chart that Alberta Meany's has been putting out, and I've seen some other, so it's kind of interesting, because you know, we do get asked a lot, and we, you know, I always explain to people, not 100% of your taxes is driven by us, so it's kind of interesting for people to understand how that, how that works, so.
And our financing has done that specific chart for our own taxpayers as well, it's been out and about. Reeve King.
I was just going to say that the insert that went with the tax notices, and that information that was there is very good, and I've had numerous compliments on just how it's presented and how useful that was. So you can take those attaboys back to efforts in charge of that, and just express my thanks that, like I say, I've heard good things about what's there, and it's very much appreciated, so. And then I had a small question around, one of the things that we've always said is that we want to sustain our existing service levels, and maybe it's a question more for council than anybody else, is really, are we affirming that that's exactly where we are? Because one of the biggest savings that's potentially available to us as council is to adjust or downgrade the level of service. We keep saying maintain, and then we always say, well, how come it costs so much? Because we're maintaining. And in some cases, we have enhanced, I think in ag services, for instance, we enhanced our weed management side of things, and so it costs more money. So philosophically, we all want to maintain or do better, but we have to recognize that that costs money. And in my mind, one of the best options to us as a council, if we were looking to really save money, would be to look at our service levels. And at this point, I don't think any of us are ready or willing to do that, but that's one of the things that we need to be very cognizant of, so.
Thank you for that, it's worth the question for sure. Counselor Cunningham.
So yeah, and actually, further to the Reeve's point, I, I think it was at the ratepayer meeting in Huxley last week, that somebody actually did bring their insert, I think, I think it was that night, yeah, I thought that was really interesting, and, and there was that video that Nihil County did there a couple of years ago, that I know I kind of still refer people to, so, because it was very well-done, so. And just through the chair to see, oh, one question that I have that, depending if I'm sitting in this chair next term, one thing that confuses me is, is the salaries and wages piece, and I know we've had this conversation, I don't need to know how, why, when, what the reasonings are for any staff member, whether it's a retirement or any other reason, but I get a little bit confused on that budgeting, because I know sometimes there is a cost to that when we do have, have staff leave. So I was just curious, or a question that I would be asking going forward, do we, how do we account for that? Like, how do we, to me, that would be so hard to forecast, so is it a, is it a certain number, is it a percentage of that, salaries and wages, or just, that would something, just even after four years, and I just, I don't, I don't understand very clearly on that, how that's forecasted or planned for, I guess.
Go ahead, Mr. Hogan.
Through the chair, so one of, we don't, we have allowances that are, that are built in, so when we look at wages and salaries throughout their, as their, their cumulative number within the budget, we have different allowances that we build in, and some are increases, some are decreases. So, for example, we don't, we don't know exactly how much overtime is going to be put in in an upcoming year, but we know there's going to be some, and we have historic trends, right? So we're able to, and we're able to estimate that, and I think estimate it fairly well. So, and that, that again is based on historic trends, how we manage overtime and stuff like that, but that would be an example of you've got your base salaries, and then you're going to add some to it, because we know there's going to be overtime throughout the year, right? We also have allowances that go the other way, and Ms. Van Merbach can, can provide more detail if needed, but I think we, we have, whether it's a one or a 1.5% allowance decrease that we do, because we know there's going to be, you know, historically, there's going to be turnover throughout the year. And so some positions are going to spend time vacantly, vacant as the, the incumbent leaves, and we're hiring that process. So that is something that I think we brought in the last two years, roughly, is saying, you know, there's, there's a, a decrease that we can put in place there, because we know that not every position is filled 100% every, at every point in the year, right? Because people retire and we're filling that position, or they take a new position, and it's vacant for a couple months, that type of thing, right? So we actually have an allowance in there where we decrease that base rate, because we know there's, historically, we've seen some of those things are going to be vacant. If it's a case of somebody leaving on their own terms, we do have in, if you look in our financial statements, we have some liabilities in there that are, that are listed, there are vacation, sick time entitlements, those, those types of things. So within that, those, those are established, we know what those are, and so when we have to essentially, I'm not going to try and go into the specific accounting terms, because I will get them wrong, and Ms. Van Merbach will frown at me, but we do have those accounted for. And so we know what that, what we could, I'll put it this way, we know what we're on the hook for, and so we, we manage that. The, if we have individuals that, as an example, were moving out, and they're under employment law, there, there's ways that you have to go about that, we, we absorb those within the existing budget. So we don't necessarily put in a, an allowance for that type of activity, but we'll absorb those within, within the budget, and that can, that can manifest itself in a couple of ways. Is one, if we have positions that have been vacant for a long time, and we have money that we've not spent that way, you may see that being used to absorb it. In other ways, you might just see that budget line go over. And we're, when we look at not just salaries, but pretty much any, any of our budget lines in the county, we're not managing on a, on a pure, you know, GL by GL basis. I mean, in a way we are, but what we're really looking at is the bottom line. So we do have times where fuel might be a good example. So we budget X amount for fuel, and the price of the pumps goes up, and now we're going to spend a bit more. We don't, we still keep coding that to the fuel GL, and that GL goes over, but the bottom line for the department is still on track. And so we've managed that in a different, in a different way, and we know, we do that so we can, we're in a better position with data to make the adjustment in the following year, as opposed to trying and split those, split those out. So when we do, when we do have any overages like that, we're, we're looking at other ways in the budget to manage them. So whether that's existing vacancies and money we haven't spent, or whether that's just overall budget management.
Any other questions? I appreciate, I think the hard part when you're new, sometimes, is whether to take this literally as the gospel truth of how you're spending money, or whether this is simply the budget, and that because we are a fluid group, we, any budget, and for any type of reasoning, whether it's household, corporate, or us, we need to be able to be fluid enough at the times. And so then there's other processes available to us to adjust when things are unpredictable or different than the data would have suggested. And so though it's highly suggested to maintain it close to be, there's certainly going to be all kinds of unforeseen things that mean you have to come in front of us and adjust it, but when there's an adjustment, that always comes forward. And so that's where the security needs to lay, is that there's processes to come forward if it needs to be adjusted. Counselor Hogan, I mean, CAO Hogan. Hey, welcome to the bunch!
As far as I know, I'm not. Yeah. The, through Madam Chair, the, some, some of those, that budget management, some of those take the form of adjustments, others, like I said, they are, they might be on overage on a specific line, but the bottom line of the department, we're still on budget, and council's seen that historically in the year-end surpluses, right? Those are generated from the grand, you know, the amalgamation of everything that is, is not spent versus what was budgeted, or extra that's received from revenues, that sort of thing. We, the, the other mechanism, and probably the big one that, that council has in terms of that oversight component, are the quarterly variance reports. So when Ms. Van Merbach and Finance bring those forward, is, in those, that's where we're also telling you, hey, we've seen above-anticipated expenditures in this area, here's how we're going to manage them. And that might be, you know, we're over in this area, but we're under in this area. Or it might be, we actually need an adjustment to the budget, in which case that's council to, to consider and to approve or not, right? So those quarterly variance reports are really the oversight tool around, is the budget on track or is it not, right? And that's where we say, here are these unanticipated things, or this is exactly as we anticipated it, or those types of, those types of, of stories or information that we're, we're showing, right? And that's really where administratively, we're giving you the heads-up of, you know, things are on track, or we've seen something abnormal that we think council should be aware of. And here's where, here's the tool for managing that. So whether, you know, the, the municipalities also done other things in, in the past number of years, so as an example, there are, in our policies, there are overages that we're, we're allowed to approve as well. So we get into capital projects as an example. That's one, is if we're, you know, in the past, if we budgeted X amount of dollars for a greater, and it was 20,000 over, we'd be back in front of council, but we wouldn't need to, even though we budgeted, you know, 300,000 for a truck, and we got it for 250, at the end of the day, we've replaced the equipment for 30,000 less than we intended to spend, right? So the process is now is, there are, there are certain leeways that administratively we can just do. We've approved block funding for bridges, so that we don't have to, because what we were running into in the past, as an example, is we would have each bridge approved separately. Once we put it out for tender, the first bridge comes Once we put it out for tender, the first bridge comes back and it's 100,000 over, the second bridge comes back and it's 30,000, oh, sorry, it's 100,000 under, the second bridge comes back and it's $30,000 over, and we'd have to come back and get permission to do for the extra 30,000, even though we were 100,000 under in our bridge replacement file, right? So in that case, what we're, we're approving those as block funding so that we, we're estimating we're going to spend the 700,000 on bridges to replace two, three, whatever the case may be, that as long as we're within that budget to do that work, we can go forward with it. If we're going to exceed that budget, we have to come back. And so those are some of those, those oversight tools that council's put in, balancing that with, with efficiency.
Excellent.
Generally, when we're replacing that bridge, it needs to be replaced, so there's.
Thank you. I appreciate that explanation. Any questions, thoughts, concerns about what to expect for our process? Wow. Doing good. Okay. Do we have someone who's willing to make a motion then? Go ahead, Counsel Phobes.
I make the motion that the Committee of Hoare recommends to council to adopt the 2026 budget guidelines.
Thank you. And it appears we're done with discussion. Last call for a discussion point. Okay, I call the question. All those in favor? Carried unanimous. Thank you very much. Yep, we are happy.
We are happy.
Well.
With the format.
With the format, yes, we're happy with the format. With the way it was presented today, yes. Okay, now let's go to where I originally wanted to go, and we'll go to policy 3-3, Council Appointees and Reimbursement Review, and Mr. Van Kool, Ms. Van Kool. Poor people, I shouldn't use titles today because I'm not getting them very well. Go ahead when you're ready.
Thank you. So as part of council's ongoing review of current policies, particularly those that have not been reviewed for more than four years, policy 3-3, Council Appointees reimbursement is now due for review. The council appointees reimbursement purpose is to establish clear guidelines for the rates of pay, mileage, meal reimbursement, and convention allowance for our appointed members at large. Members at large are appointed by council resolutions at our organizational meetings each year with the exception, exception of the Ag Service Board members, who are appointed for your, for years' terms. As one member drops off, a new member is, is added or appointed. The last time we reviewed this policy was back in March 2021. At that time, council approved the council compensation and expense renumeration policy. This new policy consolidated 13 individual policies into a single comprehensive policy. At the same time, the council appointees policy required updates to include guidelines for reimbursing mileage, meals, and convention allowance, as the previous policy referenced those 13 individual policies were now repealed. Also at that time, council adjusted the policy by removing the annual COLA from the per diem rate. Over the past five years, the rate for members at large has remained unchanged. I've listed the rates in RFD for council's review. I also added council's rate as well as some neighboring municipalities to compare. Administration doesn't have any adjustments to this policy, except for council to consider reviewing the rates. If there are any changes, and when we take this back to council for formal approval, we'll be recommending that these changes don't take place until January 1st, 2026, to align with the new budget cycle, so that it will have no impact on the 2025 budget. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, looking for suggestions and thoughts, Counsel Phobes.
On the meals, I would like to see that be increased because I don't know about you, but were you buying a breakfast at for $15 in any hotel we're staying at? You can't. I mean, in most cases, breakfast and lunch are provided for at the conferences we're going to, but I can't buy an appetizer for $25 for supper these days. So I'm just looking at maybe a $5 increase to each of those to help offset the cost of that.
Anyone have any comments around that? I agree. If I walked over to McDonald's, I might.
If you're lucky.
Get under 15. A suggestion of what rate you would like to see put there?
Like, I'd like to see breakfast and lunch go from 15 to 20, and then supper go from 25 to 30.
Anyone else have any input on that suggestion? Counselor Woodstock.
Near as I can gather, those are rates if you don't have a receipt. If you actually have a receipt, you're compensated for the whole amount. Am I correct in that?
That's how I read it. Yep. CEO, Mr. Hogan, said yes, that is correct. I still think it's valid, though.
I don't either, but just for the, the members at large is where my head was.
Yeah.
Sorry, Jerry, just for the members at large is where my head was. I don't normally submit receipts for any of this anyway. I have to eat, I have to eat, so.
Counselor Penningham.
I would just send to the assistant if you had a receipt as well covered, and if you didn't have a receipt, you would just put the per diem allowance.
Counsel Penningham.
So just curious, I think the 2020 review that was done, I think that was just before Counsel Phobes and I were on this new term, because I just don't remember that discussion, I could be wrong, but I was, I would just be wondering what would be the justification for removing COLA from that one? I think if I remember correctly, we have COLA for our staff, so I just wonder what, what the thought process was in removing COLA from, from these, just out of curiosity.
I can't recall. Go ahead, Karen.
Actually, staff members do not have COLA, and at the time, we were removing COLA from all of our policies, as some were using the October Consumer Index, some were using September, so we wanted to be more concise and be, use the same method.
So I, I thought it was interesting, some of the roundtable discussion, I had a couple of the sessions over at FCM, is the struggle we're having sometimes to have people be available. Some people discussed how we have two member families, two members from each family often being employed, and so that makes it even more of a struggle depending on what hours we are asking for their time. And so I think that needs to be, there was a lot of discussion about how we, we need to remember that people are sometimes taking time away from work and their families, and this is a big deal. I also have to say that from the regional conversations I've had with people, both regionally within Alberta and again at FCM, we do a great job here of caring for our residents who step up. There are some people on some of the committees that I've been on that get virtually nothing more than mileage. So I think that's a very sad statement for some of those municipalities, and the more transparent we want to be, and the more we want to have our entire resident group to be part of what's happening, the more we need to be able to support that being a reasonable thing to ask of them. And so I'm quite in favor of seeing some increases, but I would love to hear other people's opinion. Counselor Penningham.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, the council was sat here two terms ago, in 2021 or part of 2020, in our discussions, there was a lot of rollbacks just in the public with wages and whatnot else, and we as a council chose to, as an example, we were prepared to take a rollback, and we took a $65 for the full day per diem back. And so I hear what you're saying, Debbie Rae McGee, and times are tough for some people, and we don't want this to be a hindrance for them not to come forward. So I think we do for sure need to review those amounts.
Great. Ms. Van Kool.
I'd also like to add, like, prior to 2019, that actually the members at large rates and council renumeration were at the same rates, but then the CRA changed their ways, and then, so then their counselors' pay was taxed, so then they increased their per diem rate, but they left the members at large still at the same rate. And then, so then the members at large just collected COLA from that point. So the point of my story is at one time, the council per diem rate and the council appointees reimbursement was at the same rate.
But was also tax-free, which it no longer is. Right?
I don't know if the counts, yes, they both were tax-free.
Which justifies the increase for sure. Mm-hmm. Yeah, it was a big, huge dent to those. Any other suggestions or thoughts or comments, history to share? I'm open to any type of discussion, and, and I can resort to roundtable if we need. Go ahead, Counsel Penningham.
Well, it's like you said, Debbie Rae McGee, it's the conversations you get into when you attend events and stuff, so I can't remember which one it was, I was at lately, but discussion came up, and I know there's some different formats that different municipalities use, and the one I know that came up was that the CEO determines what council or members at large make, and I, I thought, I found that very odd, like, I thought, I can't imagine putting your CEO in that position, because we all know we have one employee and that's the CEO, and I, I would find that to be a lot of, lot to put on your CEO, but that, some of them do it that way, I guess. And the other way was, and just to point out, so people are aware too, this isn't just council, these are, this is members at large that we're discussing as well, so they also talked about forming committees, that they had an outside, you know, like rate pair committee come in and kind of do a review of, of rates, so I just thought that was a couple of interesting ideas of the way some folks are doing it, but, but I certainly would not be in favor of putting that onus on the CEO.
So since, since we are talking about our committee members at large, and so we are specifically referring to our rate pairs and not ourselves as counselors, the last increase that we gave to members at large was in 2020, when we went to the 292, 85. If you took a 2% inflationary rate from that day forward, we'd probably be sitting about 325 plus or minus in 2025. So not only is it maybe reasonable for us to look at what happens on the compensation for meals for those members at large, but also what we're paying them on a per diem basis. So I'm wondering if there's an appetite to actually increase the per diem for those members at large. And my thought was we might want to, and I recognize it as budget implications and all of those things, but we're talking about a grand total of what, nine, 10, 11 people potentially? Some of them would probably, very rarely if ever go on training exercise, but potential is there. So my thought was, would we consider going up in our per diem? And in my mind, it's 320 is the number I had.
320? Okay, so we have a suggestion of 320. Does anyone want to make comments on that suggestion?
So I'm not sure who's going to, I think in CEO Hogan, when we did the land, not land use by law, the MDP, the people that came in got these rates as well, correct? Or no?
Through, through the chair, any, any member at large that we would bring in to work to, beyond, whether it's a committee working group?
Okay.
Would be entitled to mileage and to?
To this, okay, thank you.
The rates that you're setting, yeah. So you've got individuals on municipal planning commission, ag services board, when we did the MDP review, as you brought up, Counsel Phobes, we had the, the individuals on each working group. And you can likely anticipate the similar process, we're going to be, the next council's going to be doing the land use by law review, right? So there are, there are items like that, that, that come up.
Counselor Penningham.
I have no issues with raising it to 320, 325 at all.
Okay, so I assume with no one saying I have an issue with it, we're going to be content with 320 as the suggestion?
Until we make a motion, we're not really content with much, but.
Yeah. Content with the discussion around the dollar amount, I suppose, right? Yeah.
I guess in my mind, I, I just see that if we value the participation of members at large, they haven't seen an increase into their compensation, like I said, since 2020, so perhaps it is reasonable for us to consider doing that. And so I certainly value the members that we have who have participated and are participating in what we're doing, so, anyway, those are my thoughts.
Excellent.
With more and more handed down to us from higher levels of government, our job sitting in this seat, my job, my feeling, is, has increased hugely, and I am all for many a day, you can go through and try and justify, and you're making pennies per hour with sitting in this job sometime, some months.
Yes.
It's a lot, a lot, a lot of work. So I would put forward that, I've got no hesitation in saying, and I think we're worth a lot more than what I'm going to say, but I would like to see ours increased to like the 360, not the whole way.
So I believe that's going to be a discussion at a different time?
Yeah.
Because we're just going to do the appointees.
This is the not, they just put in council, it's non, this policy's for, yeah.
Yeah, so it is important to, though, to, to bring that we're, we're not suggesting that our appointees be paid the same as we, we are just given a dollar figure, knowing that the council reimbursement and will be brought forward at a different time. Mr. Hogan.
Through Madam Chair, that's correct. So actually, you have, very quickly in the future, you have an item coming to you at a council meeting to ask about the process that council wants to undertake for that. So there is, that is, it is the historic practice of the county to, for council to undertake the review of council compensation prior to the election with any changes to take place following the election. So you're making that decision for, for the next council, so it doesn't actually impact you, right? Unless you're, unless you're back after the election. So that's been the county's historical practice. You've got an item coming for you, and I'd have to refer to that, but I believe it's even next council meeting, around whether you want administration to gather that and make a recommendation to you, or the other process is if you want to give some guidance and have a small group of residents make a recommendation to you based on that same data. So that's the question we're posing around the process of an upcoming council meeting, but that is the start of that review of the council component of the compensation.
Thank you.
So, so the reason I'm bringing it forward, and you'll hear from me later on, is, is that enough for our member at large?
Mm-hmm.
You know? So that's why I'm bringing it forward.
Yeah. Mm-hmm, it is.
Like, sorry, a little bit, like clarification. For sure, we do a lot more. We, we touch on a lot more departments, whereas most of our, they're just single lead department issues. So I'm, I'm fine with it, you know, the 320, but I just wanted to throw it out there.
Okay, I'm going to do a quick roundtable question to see if there's any other comments or can thoughts around what's been suggested before we ask for a motion. Any other conversation you'd like to have? Mr. Counselor Whitstock.
No, not really. I, I agree with the 320 for anything over $4.
And then.
Under, under the four hours would be half that rate, I guess.
And the meal suggestion sounds good as well?
Yeah, I'm fine with the meal suggestion. I, I personally would just rather do receipts, but that's not my choice. It's up to everyone else. So yeah.
Right.
Raise the five bucks, pop, that'll be all right.
Okay. Council Penningham.
Yeah, just, I mean, just like everybody said, I, you know, we're asking folks to come in and take time out of their day and whether they, like you said, whether it's childcare or they're leaving work or whatever. Yeah, I, I just want them to be adequately compensated. So yeah, I'm happy with the 320, 325, wherever you want to go with it. But I think sometimes, until you sit on these committees, people aren't aware of the work that goes into them. And, you know, you look, I know egg services board or, or MPC, depending on the files. I mean, there, there can be a lot of, a lot of work that's, has to go into that. So and I, just the four years of sitting on here, I don't think we've had like a ton of people knocking on the door to be on the committees. So I think people do realize the amount of work that it does take. So yeah, I'm happy to see an increase for members at large for sure.
Council Penningham, did you want to add anything? Reeve King, did you want to add anything?
Yes and no. I just, yeah. The value of the people who come in to provide us with additional input is, you can't measure it. So
I agree.
I think this is well worth doing.
Councilphobes.
I'm in agreeance as well with the increase. I, there are times that as a councillor sitting here and the amount of time I've put into stuff, I'm making less than $5 an hour. But that's not why I sat here, was to make money. I sat here so that I could do what the public can't always do, which is have a conversation with people around the table.
Yep. Very good. And Council Christie.
Well, I just punched in the 325 in 2021. Comes to 260 or 364. If you go 292 in 2020 and bring it up, it's 362. So very similar. So 320 for me would be the minimum. I'd much prefer to like see 340.
340.
It's the same buying power as we had five years ago. Like, that's the part that gets my attention.
I understand. Okay, so we all have had our say. Now I'm looking for a motion. Okay, Councilphobes.
I would make the motion to increase the per diem for a full day from 29285 to 320. And that the food goes an increase of $5. So lunch and supper go from 15 to 20 and supper goes from 25 to 30.
Great. I'll just wait for us to have our motion up. Go ahead, Mr. Christie.
Could we add inflation, or the inflationary number annually to that, like it was before?
I like that point. Councilphobes, how do you feel about that? Does anyone else have any comments about adding the COLA to it?
Which COLA though? Because there's Alberta and then there's Canada. So we have to choose one.
It would have to be standard with whatever we do.
Yeah.
So Mr. Hogan.
Through you, Madam Chair, if I can weigh in on that, one of the things that I think I'd recommend is to, to hold off on that specific component of it. You've got the council compensation review coming up. And so as you go through that process, it would give you the chance that if you decide on any sort of market adjustment or COLA in that, that respect, you might give the same one to your, to your members at large as well. If you decide not to, then you might choose to keep in alignment and say no as well, right? So there might be some merit to holding off at this moment. And revisiting it as part of, in conjunction with the other one as well. Whether you want to align both of those to the market adjustment that council determines for staff each year, that some places do that as well, some don't. So if you, if you hold that off, you might have a more holistic discussion on it a bit later.
Great to hear. Thank you. Okay, we will do that. Any other thoughts before I call the question?
It's still adjusting, so can we?
Mm-hmm, absolutely. We'll wait for our screen to have our motion in place. Okay, so we have that the Committee of the Hull recommend to council to amend policy 3-3, council appointees reimbursement to incorporate the updated per diem rate to 320 for a full day and to increase in meal reimbursement to $20 for breakfast and for lunch and $30 for supper. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Unanimously, sorry. Okay, that brings that item to a finish. And I understand there are no closed session items, correct? I didn't miss anything. I would like to thank this table and all in the room for your indulgence as I entered a little bit short of time. My apologies for that, unavoidable. And I just appreciate the grace and professionalism that each of you have carried that meeting forward. And after having said that, I'd like to call, oh, Council Penningham.
Just a reminder to our ratepayers and thank you to those who attended the Huxley Ratepayer Evening. The next one is here on Thursday from 4 to 7 at the Horseshoe Canyon site. Please come on out and have some questions for our staff with good, bad, ugly, whatever it is you have on your mind, please come out and discuss it. And I know they'll all be good questions, but they get informed. So that's this Thursday at Horseshoe Canyon. Please come on out and find out what's happening within the county.
I really appreciate that, Council Penningham. I've had a couple of people come forward thinking the Horseshoe Canyon piece, because it's Horseshoe Canyon, is something, a totally different event. And have confused the fact that this is a ratepayer evening, just like all the other ones we've had in the past. And we really would like you to come out and appreciate, have all that information available to you. And it is not specific to that place. It's simply the location, no different than any of the other events. So. Exactly. So thank you for that reminder. I appreciate that a lot. Any other comments before I close? Council Christie.
I have another appointment that night with Community Futures, so I can be there shortly in the beginning, but then I have to go to Strathmore.
Okay, good to hear. Thank you. Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.